Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 School Board Regular Meeting. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take this moment and respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Matheson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Mrs. Tuttle, could we please get the roll call?
Ms. Smith is excused. Colonel Williamson by Zoom.
Here.
Thank you. Colonel Suri by Zoom.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson is expected. Mrs. Matheson.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Doran.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Maradi.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke.
Here.
Thank you. The Board has a quorum.
Thank you so much. Our first item is our School Board Iolson Air Force Base Representative Recognition. Core value: Maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Colonel Stuart Williamson, Commander, 354th Mission Support Group, will be recognized for his service to the School Board. President Luke will make the -- I will make the presentation. Sorry. That just always seems weird. Colonel Williamson, first off, we would just like to say a hearty and a heartfelt thank you to you and to all that you have done for our community, for the school community on Iolson, for the school community here, for the North Star Borough. Thank you for that time, the effort, the energy, and your ability to articulate the needs of the families and the students within Iolson and the Air Force Base. And so we have this wonderful certificate of appreciation to say thank you as you get ready to leave. We are never very great -- we're never very happy to see our military representatives leave, and we are always so incredibly grateful. A couple of things about Colonel Williamson is that he, as he got up here, he was tasked with being in charge of the Iolson Housing Crunch. We all have known that we were able to expand Iolson and get an incredible group of military personnel out at Iolson. And Colonel Williamson, being the incredibly great Colonel, was really in charge of ensuring that those that came up here had housing, that their needs were being met, that they were able to focus on their mission up here at Iolson and within our community. The other thing that he was tasked with, as we all know, is COVID. We are incredibly grateful for Colonel Williamson, not just what he's done through COVID and Colonel Suri as well, but being able to be a voice for the needs of the military personnel, their families, and the schools found on Iolson. We really heavily leaned on Colonel Williamson this past year with Anderson and Crawford Elementary and with that decision as we combined those two schools. He was able to ensure that we found the historical understanding of name changes. He was able to spearhead an understanding of what the community on Iolson felt, what the commanding colonels. I apologize, Colonel Williamson, if I'm using the wrong terminology, but what the leaders on Iolson would like to see for those schools. And so we are incredibly grateful for that information, which was vital in the decision as we had to combine those two schools. And we would just like to, as I said, say thank you and wish you well as you go to the United Arab Emirates to be the heir attache. So can we please just give a round of applause to say thank you for all of the work, effort, and energy that he has put into representing these schools? Are there any other board members that would like to say a few words? Mr. Doran.
Colonel Williamson, I just wanted to add, certainly second to everything that President Luke has mentioned, but just wanted to add to your leadership and atmosphere of welcome that you established at the entry to Iolson Air Force Base. My visits down there were always wonderful, and I really appreciated that welcome that I got at the gate each time, facilitation of my entry on base, that I know is a reflection of your welcome to all of us as board members to encourage and facilitate our visiting the schools on base. So thank you for that aspect, as well as all the others that Mrs. Luke has aptly stated. Best of luck to you.
Colonel Williamson, would you like to say a few words? I'm going to put --
Thanks, President Luke. Great. I really appreciate it. It's been a pleasure to be on the Board as an advisory member. And as you mentioned, we got to work some real tough issues together that affected Iolson and the schools that are here on the installation. You know, whether it was bus schedules or remote hybrid in-person learning, mask wear as we all rode out the pandemic, the school closure of Anderson and the renaming of Anderson-Crawford. You know, when these questions or challenges get to us, none of them are easy, whether you're part of the Board or part of the administration. And I think we all have the tough job of trying to do the right things for the district and for the students. So I really appreciate you all hearing us out and for me getting a chance to be the voice of Iolson and being a part of the community here for a couple of years. And I wish you all well in the next school season. And my replacement is going to be Colonel Tony Alvarado, who will get here towards the end of July. So thank you all.
Thank you, Colonel Williamson. Next on the agenda, we have the adoption of the Agenda. Core value: Center everything we do on the student and student learning. Consent Agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the School Board unless removed from the consent agenda. Asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to adopt the Agenda with the Consent Agenda Items with the exception of Consent Item J4: Fundraising Request Ben Ielson Jr., Senior High School, to be removed and revised by the school for future agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Tuttle, can we get the vote, please?
Colonel Williamson.
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Suri.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. And any person wishing to speak on an Agenda action item will have two minutes to testify when that item is before the School Board for discussion. And there is a limit of one hour total testimony per that item. Mrs. Maline, can we get the presentation of the Agenda items?
The Board has approved Resolution 2023-02: Establishing Signatory Authority to Conduct the Necessary Business Activities of the District of the 2022-2023 Fiscal Year. The Designated Hazardous Routes Within Fairbanks' North Starborough School District Transportation Zone for School Year 2022-2023 as Provided. And Budget Transfers 2021-22.1: Reserve Transfer from General Fund to Nutrition Services Fund in the Amount of $463,553. The Board has approved fundraiser requests of Lathrop High School to fundraise approximately $2,000 through car washes and coffee, yard, food sales, with proceeds to be used to support the school's tennis program. And Lathrop High School to fundraise approximately $25,000 through the sales of vendor discount cards, with proceeds to be used to support the school's football program. The Board has accepted donations of $2,129.08 from the Barnett Magnet PTA and Barnett Magnet School to be used for the purchase and installation of a double basin sink in the school's café. $1,280 from the Purple and Gold Choir Booster Club at Lathrop High School to support the school's drama program. A donation of $1,500 from the Ventilation Solutions LLC to Lathrop High School to support the school's boys soccer program. $2,017.37 from Emerald Isle Pole Tabs Game to Lathrop High School to support the boys' and girls' soccer program. $6,706.08 from Wallsworth to Lathrop High School for yearbook expenses. $24,832.57 from the Lathrop High School Wrestling Booster Club to Lathrop High School to support the school's wrestling program. $1,000 from Stephanie Dolly to North Pole High School to support the school's softball program and state travel expenses. $10,000 from the North Pole Wrestling Club to North Pole High School to pay off the wrestling team's travel expenses for the 2021-2022 season. $27,872.63 from North Pole Hockey Booster Club to North Pole High School to cover the hockey team's travel expenses from the 2021-2022 season. $1,000 from K.E. Bentley One LLC to West Valley High School to support the school's softball program. $1,250 from the Interior Girls Softball Association to West Valley High School to support the school's softball program. $2,092 from the E-Team Sponsor Incorporated to West Valley High School to support the school's softball program. And $8,979.50 from West Valley Boys Soccer Booster to West Valley High School to support the school's boys soccer program. The Board has approved the Personnel Action Report for the period May 6 through 26, 2022, and the minutes from the May 16, 2022 special meeting, the May 17, 2022 regular meeting, and the May 23, 2022 work session as submitted. The Board has acknowledged the Personnel Information Report for the period May 6 through 27, 2022, the Budget Transfer Report for the period May 1 through 27, 2022, the Board's reading file, and the coming events and meeting announcements.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Public Comments on Reports and Non-Agenda Items. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items, including input, ideas, and suggestions, are welcome and encouraged regarding the school year's fiscal year 2022-2023 school year budget, along with public input on salaries, benefits, and any other contractual items regarding the ESSA and FEA associations. Core value: Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support student success. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the School Board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and their city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for School Board and Superintendent comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately, as additional information may need to be gathered. So we will start out with those who have previously signed up and then those who signed up when they arrived this evening. First, we have Sandy Ryan. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Good evening and happy summer. My name is Sandy Ryan, R-Y-A-N. I'm a resident of Fairbanks, a 28-year teacher of high school mathematics and computer science, and I currently serve as the Fairbanks Education Association President. Today, CNN Business headline stated, "Wages Are Rising at Their Fastest Pace in Decades." Here's how it stacks up with inflation. "The labor market has caused wages to increase faster than any time since the mid-1980s. All employment sectors are struggling with retention and recruitment. Education is no exception. Across the country, teachers' job fairs, once the bread and butter of every teacher and district, to find the very best fit for themselves and for the schools, are virtually disappearing. Now applicants and employers are online services such as Monster, Indeed, and Lincoln to find the perfect online match. It is truly a seller's market." CNN Business noted that although the increase in wages this year is one of the highest in decades, inflation is taking its toll. "The Consumer Price Index ending in April rose by 8.3%. Gas prices, which averaged $3 a gallon about a year ago, are now well over $5. Mortgages are also up 5%. However, our district's negotiation team continues to insist that staff should bear the weight of the budgetary concerns: 0% raises, increase in healthcare costs solely assumed by the employees, reduction in actual hours for our support staff, and removal of incentives and participation in healthcare savings or notification of early retirement bonuses. Educators are asking, 'What's keeping me here? Is it time to recognize the need for serious negotiation, or are you indeed going to find educators looking for positions elsewhere?'" Thank you for your time. I have 10 seconds left.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Danielle Logan. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Thank you. My name is Danielle Logan, L-O-G-A-N, and I reside here at Fairbanks. As you're preparing to vote on the proposed budget for the 2022-2023 school year, I would like for you to think about a few things. You all agreed during the May 23 work session that you did not want to let the fund balance fall below $5 million. I get that, and I understand that. Now, think about the five days in the proposed budget that you want to cut from the nine, 10-month employees. If $5 million will make it hard for the district to operate, think about how five days affects a family's budget. If your employer cuts five days from your employment, would you be happy? At least 80% of your support staff work a second job to help supplement income. These are non-student contact days that Ms. Maline has said has nothing to do with classroom operations and student learning, which couldn't be further from the truth. First, you must understand that we do not have time built into our schedules without students in the building. When we start, kids are there. When we end our day, the students are ending their day. The constant "go, go, go" damages our ability to get trainings, debrief with teachers and administrators, and simply better prepare for how to educate, how we educate our students. These days are badly needed for training, continuing education for our staff that do not otherwise get the time in their workday to do. For example, our parents almost never get any training before entering into a classroom, and if they're lucky, they might get CPI training beforehand. If not, that'll have to wait till an end service day, parent-teacher conference day. All support staff need and want more training. All support staff need and want more trainings and a chance to become better employees, but this is simply not possible during regular school days. When there are not trainings going on, our support staff need those no-contact days for debriefing and planning with their teachers. Additionally, as a parent and support staff member, I can attest to how much better it is to have support staff who work daily with our students for take in the parent-teacher conferences with their teacher. These days are also needed to allow for staff that actually have support staff.
Ms. Matheson?
You said CPI training. Can you clarify what CPI means?
Ms. Matheson, I can't tell you the abbreviation off the top of it, but it's to help with holds and stuff for Sped students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Nicole Eiseman. If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Nikki Eiseman, E-I-S-E-M-A-N. I'm here joining all the voices in support of keeping those five days for the ESSA staff. I started working for the district in '89 as an ESSA employee and did so until 2009, when I returned to school through a parent-to-professional program, finished up my career as a teacher. So I entered the classroom fully experienced in school culture with the enthusiasm of a new teacher. Okay, so let's imagine a different version of me. In 2019, I'm working as a bank teller. I really want to work with kids. I get hired as a teacher's aide, grade six, $19 an hour. It's a pay cut, but I want to do it anyway because I think I want to go into teaching. I work this year at $19 an hour. I love my work. I actually hear that there's a program with Shadrin University, and I can get tuition support. And so even though I'm having a really hard time getting by, I stick with the program. And then I get a $0.43 raise, which buys me half a tank of gas for my Ford Focus. And then I make it through the COVID, and now I'm back to a regular school year, and I really want to stick with it. And I think, oh, my gosh, maybe we're going to get a raise this year, and maybe I can keep doing this, even though I've had to take a roommate, and I can't fix my car, and I can't afford the healthcare I need, but I'm so committed to this. And then I find out I'm going to get a 2.5% cut, which is what those five days amount to. And just doing the math, that $19 an hour times $7 a day, I'm going to round to 20, times 7 is 140 a day, times 197 workdays, that gets me in at about $28,000 a year, which, my friends, is very little money. If I have any kind of family, I'm at the poverty rate. Please find another way. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
And I've really never been a bank teller, you know. Thank you for your really hard work.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eiseman. Next, we have Brandy Hardy. Brandy?
Hello?
Hi. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
My name is Brandy Hardy, H-A-R-T-Y, and I'm a resident of Fairbanks. Our ESSA staff are a vital part of every school in our district. They work in our classrooms, they serve our students nutritious food, they help keep our learning environment clean and safe. They are our front office staff and our elementary librarians. They help our students when they are having a hard day and are a vital part of implementing students' IEPs. Without our ESSA staff, our schools absolutely could not function. Given their vital role in our students' education, I am so very dismayed to hear that their workdays were cut and thus their annual pay reduced via a budget line item. While this action may technically be legal, it is certainly a questionable practice. The ESSA Union is currently in the process of negotiating their contract. Changes in pay should be made via a union contract negotiation, not via budget line items. When there is no shortage of jobs available, many at an entry level and paying more per hour than many of our ESSA staffs currently get, it is simply insane to think that some of them will not leave for other higher-paying jobs. We need our ESSA staff, and they need a pay raise, not a pay cut. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Erin Janoso. If you will state your name, if you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi. My name is Erin Janoso, J-A-N-O-S-O. I live in Fairbanks, and I'm here to speak to you tonight regarding the Admin's recommendations for the reorganization of Board and Admin Committees that were shared in a memorandum attached to this meeting's agenda. I also want to state that while I'm a member of the Board's Diversity Committee, I'm here tonight speaking only for myself. In this memorandum, the Admin recommends a number of different committees. A conspicuously absent is any mention whatsoever of the Diversity Committee. After being specifically asked for clarification about this, CSA Moline stated yesterday that the omission of the Diversity Committee and the Parent Engagement Committee was to form one new Community Engagement Committee that would address a wide variety of topics for stakeholder input. This begs the question, since this information was clearly known, why wasn't it therefore included in the memorandum? It's a glaring omission that undermines trust in the school district, because whether it is or not, it seems like it could be an attempt by the Admin to avoid engaging in straightforward and honest discussion about a significant change. Ms. Moline also states in the memo that this shuffling of committees is in part justified because the responsibilities of the School Board primarily pertain to budget, policy, curriculum approval, and legislative matters. However, according to the district's own website, this summary is incomplete. And anyway, I think it would be easily obvious to most how diversity issues are relevant to even this limited list. The district states that in order to meet the needs of all students, it must intentionally focus on transforming policies, practices, and processes to eliminate the diversity, equity, and inclusion gap that affects marginalized groups here in our community. Given this, it's incredibly hard to imagine what wisdom or trustworthy justification could be behind dissolving a committee of volunteers and diluting their work within a much broader group. There will be a vote on these committee issues, but not before next fall. These Admin recommendations make it clear that the continued existence of the Diversity Committee is far from certain. For all those that are listening and like me find this to be incredibly alarming, let's join our voices and speak up loudly for those most vulnerable students trying their hardest and best to live and learn here in the Fairbanks North Starborough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Bethany Oaks. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
My name is Bethany Oaks, O-C-H-S, Fairbanks, Alaska, and I'm a newly hired intensive resource teacher. Before I was hired, I student-taught in a kindergarten classroom, and prior to that, I was a paraprofessional in a self-contained classroom. I have had the privilege to work alongside other paraprofessionals and support staff, and I can tell you that they are the backbone of our school district. They run small groups and tutoring sessions for students who need additional support and our special education and behavior staff, or the reason we as a district are able to be inclusive to all students and support individualized learning plans. I do not have the time to name all these things these crucial educators do for our district, but I do want you to know that without these educators, we cannot run these classrooms without their incredible support. I can tell you that, as an educator, I myself could not run my classroom without them. This rollback of incentives for supportive staff will ultimately lead to quality candidates seeking employment somewhere else, which will directly impact the quality of education our students are receiving. That does not align with our district's strategic goal of promoting workforce and educational excellence. I ask you to please reconsider the reduction of pay time off for our support staff to ensure we hire and retain the best personnel for our students. Thank you so much for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Britten Filter. If you will come up and state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hello. My name is Britten Filter, as in brighten your day. My last name is spelled F-E-L-T-R, and I live in Fairbanks. The honorific I use is mix, that is spelled M-X, as in mixed filter. My pronouns are they/them, and they are excited to be representing their intersecting communities here tonight. It's really important to them. I'm one of your employees. I'm in the Sped Department, and I directly serve students. I'm the ESSA Vice President and a local artist and a very proud member of the LGBTQIA+ community. And it's June, so I want to wish members of this Board, district employees, our students, our families, and our entire community a very happy Pride Month. I just love pride, mostly because pride is the opposite of shame. So I'm here to request you all do some serious heart and soul work this summer. So this month and every month moving forward, I invite us all to be curious about where any internal or external messaging that tries to inform you of who and what humans are supposed to be, and make sure those sources are ones that you actually value. Then I invite you to keep the parts of those messages that feel good and bring you joy. And then, most importantly, I invite and encourage you to examine the things that bring up disgust, hate, and shame in yourself or when you're thinking about other humans. I'm willing to bet that you have no idea how many of your students, their families, your staff identify as, oh, even members of the Board, by the way, identify as LGBTQIA+ and I'll double down, it's because they don't feel safe sharing that information with you. If diversity, equity, inclusion is part of your actual mission statement, if you're serious about that, this district has not finished the work required to eliminate a diversity committee. Please consider this with any plans the Board might have in restructuring committees this fall. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Julie Smith. Hi, Julie. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Thank you. My name is Julie Smith, sorry, Julie Smith, S-M-Y-T-H. I live in Fairbanks. Today, I am commenting on the committees you are considering bringing back next year. I have noticed that the Diversity Committee is not listed, and rather, DEI will be included as one of the responsibilities under another committee. I do not think this decision is wise, because the mission for the entire school district is, quote, "Our mission is to provide an excellent, equitable education in a safe, supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society." Having a dedicated committee that is focused on bringing diverse voices of Fairbanks as we currently exist to help guide the School Board is not easy, but it is essential in making sure that we work towards making your own mission statement a reality for every single student. Currently, there are still parents who are unsure of what their child's education will look like next year, and removing this committee will not foster trust in the members on the School Board, even with another committee taking on extra responsibilities to try to do the work of this committee as well. I ask you to make sure that we have a diversity committee next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Gretchen Nelson. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Gretchen Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N, of Fairbanks. First of all, I would like to start by saying thank you to the Board for all your hard work. I'm here today to express my disappointment in the district's administration for not following policies put forth and voted upon by this Board of Education. In my case, the district's action violated Board Policy 547, conditions of employment, resignation, and past practice requiring written notice of resignation. I am grieving what I believe to be improper termination. We are fighting this all the way and will prevail. You should be ashamed of what the district did in your name. The district believes that I offered my resignation on May 11, when in fact, I did not do so. Board policy requires written notice of resignation. I needed to take a sick day. I had the sick leave. I was able to get a sub to finish my day and told my students, I'll be back tomorrow. Somehow, my appropriate use of sick leave turned into the district accepting a resignation I never made. I was never asked if I resigned. I never resigned, and yet somehow the district accepted this phantom resignation. Secondly, the negotiated agreement of the teacher contract has four articles that I believe were not followed, Article 403, 408, 501, and 804. Within a matter of hours, not only was it announced to every family in our school community via email, but it was also posted on Facebook, which I believe is a violation of Board Policy 811, employee involuntary use of electronic and social media communications. I feel humiliated. My life has been turned upside down. My family no longer has an income or health insurance. This action has devastated my family, my resources, and my future potential earnings. This is my life's work, my chosen profession. I love teaching. I'm a born educator. If this is happening to me, a seasoned teacher just two years away from retirement, then it could happen to any FNSBSD employee. I appreciate this public testimonial time. Thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
Two questions first. Is this how the Board handles grievances, and can we provide the proper if it is not?
There is a grievance process, and it doesn't happen in a Board meeting.
Also, given this information, I request an executive session so that we can further discuss the situation.
Do we have a second? Do we have any objection?
I object.
Can we go to a vote, please?
Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
We're saying whether or not we want the executive session, correct? No.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
No.
Thank you. Motion failed.
Can I request that? Never mind, strike that. Ms. Anderson?
The matter is being reviewed or handled by our HR Department, or what? Okay, thank you.
Yes, and if it goes to mediation and it's brought to in front of the Board, we are no longer viable mediators for this situation. Mr. Doran?
Just asking, have you worked through your association, through the process with them?
Yes, we are in the grievance process.
Great, okay.
We're at step one.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make you all aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cherie Bowman. Cherie Bowman, if you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Yes. It was a little mumbled. Hello?
Hi, there you are.
Okay. Hello, Board members. My name is Cherie Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N, and I live in Fairbanks, Alaska. I have helped raise three children here, and they all attended public school. It is both disheartening and negligent of public opinion to see the direction the majority of the Board is choosing to head. This comes in the form of drastic school closures, program cuts such as the medical courses, pay cuts, job cuts, and now cuts to the school district support staff. How can you explain mistreating already overburdened support staff who has helped to keep things operating during a pandemic? You've already closed three schools. I don't understand how you can't find money to show our support staff how essential they are. And omitting the Diversity Committee? How is it that most of what we have learned is derived from science? Even the study- How is it that most of what we have learned is derived from science, even the study of other genders? And yet you continuously ignore what we have learned and instead try to insert your religious doctrines into our public schools? Those teachings belong in a church or a private school, but they have no business being here. How do I know? I am studying women, gender, and sexuality studies, including critical race theory, which, by the way, is not being taught in elementary schools. And it is only meant to be aware of and listen, for us to listen to other experiences and cultures and marginalized populations. It is about inclusiveness, and that's what our public schools should be. Happy Pride Month, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Savannah Fletcher. If she comes at the end and we still have time, we'll give her that opportunity again. Next, we have Catherine, is it Helmut? If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, and give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes. And after this, we will have Michelle Thomas.
I'm Catherine Helmut, H-E-L-M-U-T-H, and I live, I guess you'd call it Esther. I'm here to speak about the loss of pay for ESSA members. I have been with the district for 14 years as an ESSA employee in several different positions, and I wanted to let you know that no matter what position I was in, I was part of a team, working with teachers, administrators, librarians, counselors, nurses, everybody. During those non-contact days was time for me to work with my team and be a part of my team, not just with students, but with all the teachers. I work right now as a teaching assistant. Those days and those times are when I get to collaborate with the teachers directly, where we plan lessons, where we plan the stuff that needs to be prepared for the upcoming lessons, where we grade papers, where we talk about behavior issues and needs to intervene with things going on. Those days are not, those days are very much in service to the students that we serve. Even if they are not there, we are still serving those students during that time. So I would like to urge you to not make those pay cuts. I know a lot of people are going to speak to the economics of it, personal economics of it, but I wanted to speak to the school needs and the vital role that all the ESSA employees make to those teams. And when you take away those people for those five days, you weaken the whole team. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, Michelle Thomas. And after Michelle, we have Jasmine Aiken-Brown. And Michelle, if you will give us your first name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
My name is Michelle Thomas. My last name is spelled T-H-O-M-A-S, and I'm a resident of North Pole. And I'm also here to talk about the five days of pay being taken away from ESSA employees. What I want to say is the ESSA members will be at an economic disadvantage if you take five days of pay away from our paycheck. We desperately need the five days of pay because the cost of gas, food, and health insurance has gone up tremendously. Our families will be penalized if we lose money from our paychecks because we need to provide many essential needs for our families. The school district could lose ESSA employees if they lose money from their paychecks. All ESSA employees are needed to support the important mission of the school district. And unfortunately, it will be hard to support effectively with a small paycheck. And I want to say thank you very much for everything that you are doing.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Jasmine. If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify. And after this, we have Flora Rudy.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Atkins-Brown. That is A-D-K-I-N-S hyphen B-R-O-W-N. I reside in Fairbanks, and I thank you guys to meet you guys in June, in the summertime. You guys have gotten a lot of reports already about numbers. I'm not going to rattle off numbers because you guys already know what that strain is like. You also have gotten testimony from the teacher's side about how that contract is going and those numbers as well. I was in front of you before and got to serve the last three years as the ESSA president, proudly, and I have re-entered into technology and working in the schools, and I enjoy and love it. However, the morale within this district is as low as I have ever seen it before. I've grown up in the educational system. I have a long line of educators within my family, and I am proud to be an educator, even though I swore I would never do that. Don't ever swear, I guess is what my mother says. So in turn, instead of helping your morale, instead of doing what you guys have said in your motto, you have yet again gone and attacked your educators. As a leader, I was always taught that a leader doesn't lead from the front, like as in the fact that they lead to do what they're supposed to do, but they don't lead as in the fact that they're whipping the people, that they're not actually, that they are, you praise your leader based off of the work that your people have done. Yet you've offered them a raise and you have not offered your workers a raise. You've offered them a raise, yet you say, "Hey, we're going to cut your salary by these This is very shameful, and I employ you to actually go in and look at the morale within your educators because they are burnt out, and I have never seen the retention so appalling. With educator shortage across, we should be looking at retaining them, not sending them away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. For we have, if you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify. And after this testimony, we have Mesa Matheny. Matheny, thank you.
My name is Flora Roddy, R-O-D-D-Y. I live in Fairbanks. I am here for two reasons today. One is I am wearing a red shirt, red for ed, which means I support the support staff. Even though I am no longer a nine- or 10-month employee, I used to be a school term employee. Taking five days away from people who are already working second or third jobs is not going to make them happy employees. Some will have to try and find a third or fourth job to make up for this little difference. The second reason I'm here today is because of the diversity committee restructuring process. The diversity committee is near and dear to my heart. As you all may know, I'm half Anubiaq and half melting pot of Caucasian things. I brought my little friend here with me today talking about diversity on my sign. Diversity, because everybody deserves an equal chance. We all deserve an equal chance, and by taking away this committee or merging it with another bigger, three committees or something, you're taking away a big focus. And I was going to read the mission statement because when I heard that mission statement, the word diverse really stuck in my mind, but since it's already been read by a previous speaker, I will not. But we do focus on students. We do focus on a diverse staff. We do focus on making the school district a safe place for all people. Thank you.
Let me show you the backside.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. And after this testimony, we have Christine Dyer. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
My name is Mesa Matheny, M-A-T-H-E-N-Y, and I live in Fairbanks, Alaska. First of all, thank you for your service to our community and our students, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm asking the board to reinstate the five days for ESSA staff that are being cut from the budget. From a financial standpoint, five days to an hourly nine or 10 employee is very impactful. Again, you are looking at cutting wages for our lowest paid employee group. Actually, the only other time I've ever testified to the school board was when the custodial staff was looking at wage cuts as well. Second, these days that include professional development and planning time are often the only opportunities these staff are given to catch up on work, attend trainings and workshops that are essential to the jobs we do with children. What a slap in the face. Thank you for going through one of the arguably toughest school years. Thank you for covering classrooms daily. Thank you for doing your job above and beyond. Your reward, your thanks. We're going to cut five days from your salary. It is unacceptable, and I would ask the board to please reconsider that decision. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Christine Dyer. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi. I just wanted to make sure the clock's going to restart. So my name is Christine Dyer, last name D-Y-E-R. My city of residence is Fairbanks. I'd like to begin by saying happy pride and that we are all on native land. My entire life, I have been connected to the Fairbanks North Starborough School District. My parents were employed in the FNSBSD starting in the mid-1970s. My partner, David, and I are both products of this district school, repping Lathrop and Iolson. And since then, we've operated in a few different positions as district employees, and our children have been enrolled at Barnett Magnet School. Throughout our lives, we have given much of our time and energy to living and learning in this district. But I'm here tonight to resign, to end my relationship with this district, both as an employee and as a parent, due to the inextricable connection between white supremacy and the Fairbanks North Starborough School District. The racist, homophobic, close-minded, ego-fanning, deficit-thinking, student-voice-ignoring decisions made by those in power in this district have created a toxic, inequitable working environment. And the thing about a toxic, inequitable environment is that nothing grows and thrives as it should. Your superficial, sporadic interactions with student voices render you unable to feel their pulse, to know their needs, and that's a shame because it robs you from their brains as well and their insights and their feedback. But this can be remedied, and the solutions are right in front of you. First, retain value and amplify the voices of the diversity committee. And second, I'll speak to Ms. Olivia Smith about that because I think your current rep can collaborate with students, hopefully, a lot better. Students of this district, if you are listening to me, when the time comes that you are asked how and why to improve this district, make your voice heard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tuttle, I have that we have 20 minutes left. Is that correct? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify this evening? Oh. Awesome. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Come on up and state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
My name is Rosemary Brent, and I live in North Pole, and I work for the school district in the ESSA area, and.
Sorry, could you call the mic closer to your?
And could you spell your last name, please?
B-R-E-N-T.
Thank you.
Knowing what we make, and I am thankful for what I make, but whenever you consider we're working for the nine months, most of us, but we're spreading it over a 12-month period, unless we need to get another job, and, which I do, and I'm working summer, but that doesn't cover what we are going to have the expenses of through those three months that we're not here. So if you say, "Well, you can look for another job," well, you can, but then that's turnover. Every time you have employees leave and you have to have someone else come in, that's turnover. That's cost the district. It costs the students. Continuity is the best thing for students. I think everybody agrees. And when you don't have continuity, I mean, I have students in the grocery store come up to me. I have students, you know, just at summer school, scummer camp, students I don't even know because I do supportive service, and the thing is, they know me and they trust me. You hope that is with everybody. And when they bring in a new face, sometimes it takes a year for kids to trust you, to know that they can depend on you. And whenever you look at people needing to change their job because of cuts, then you're talking about taking people that kids are secure with and then having to start again. I worked in a little village, and it took sometimes two years for kids to trust you. And it's a shame to think of those people that are trusted and are doing their very best for the school district to then turn around and have to look for other jobs. And for those teachers that are depending on all those services, the school, the students that are depending on getting the help they need. I've seen kids this year, at the beginning of the year, they couldn't read, and because of some of the aides that, and they're professionals that are here, they can. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Any other testimony before we end our testimony? Come on up, give us your name. State your name, spell your last name, and give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi, my name is Johnny Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N. I live in Fairbanks. I'm here to talk about the five days being cut from ESSA. I just don't know if that's the only way to save money. If it is, could we do it throughout the whole district? Like, everybody have less time, even 12-month employees, everybody downtown? There's not as much staff in the summer? Do they need to all work? I mean, I don't understand why it's just the school support staff that's being given less opportunity to work. Most of the people that I work with would work more hours if available, but it's not, so we kind of go with what we have. We do have to work other jobs. We work in the summer. We're still supporting those kids and doing other stuff that we need to. I've been with the district a long time. I've done different jobs. You know, I don't know if I can keep staying with the district with the pay and the cuts if I. if I would need to go somewhere else, but I have a lot of experience in the district, and I feel like it would be a loss for a lot of the people that have been here a long time, that have worked different jobs, bring a lot of expertise to the school district. So please reconsider.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. It looks as though there are no-- oh, I've got two more people who have raised their hands. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence. You can go next.
Okay, sorry.
You're just fine.
Okay. Let me just--
My name is Lynda Kang, K.A.N.G., Fairbanks resident. I'm also an assistant principal at Lathrop High School. Thank you, members of the school board, Superintendent Moline and district personnel for giving me this opportunity to testify before you. I'm here this evening to ask the school board to reinstate the activities coordinator position in the high schools. I have no links to share with you of studies that show students who participate in activities and athletics excel in academics, have higher graduation rates, have a stronger support group of friends, express better communication skills, and show pride for their school and town. What I do have to share with you is firsthand experience of observing and working alongside amazing activities coordinators, such as Steve Zanazzo at Lathrop. This position is a necessary part of any high school, whether here in Fairbanks or any high school in the United States. A few years ago, I was admin on duty. Sorry, lost my place. Admin on duty at a basketball tournament at Lathrop. What I observed that evening was that our activities coordinators are our best PR personnel. Mr. Zanazzo could be seen greeting a superintendent, principals, and coaches from the visiting schools. He brought in the media to highlight the event and the hard work our student athletes in the state. This was a major event that made a positive impact to our local economy as well. This is only one example, but it is to show that he and other activities coordinators promote Fairbanks. They promote our schools. They encourage our students to increase their skills in areas that help them become better dedicated citizens. Activities coordinators seek out club and activity sponsors and coaches to bring the very best out of our students. And this past weekend, I was helping at the state softball tournament championship, and I asked one of the personnel from ASAA-- if I could just finish just her thought. And she was an activities coordinator for over 30 years, and I asked her what her thoughts were on having this position removed from onsite at school. And she said that it would be a terrible move. I totally understand the budget, but for her, to hear it from her, an experienced person, it meant a lot. So thank you.
Ms. Matheson, we have a question.
Oh.
Come on back. Yes.
So I understand about the activities coordinator, and knowing what the budget and having the activities coordinator coming back, where else could we wiggle money out of if we were to add back the activities coordinator? Have you been able to look at the budget?
That's always the difficult question, is, you know, I have amazing group of people behind me, you know, pretty much fighting for their own livelihood. If I could give part of my own salary, I totally would. That's how we all feel. We're in this together, and I'm not really sure where the money would come from. I'm here, I made the trip here because I know the state had given us additional funds. And part of me would love us to save the money, but I also know it's different what you think should happen versus when you're in the school and you live this life. So I observe, I think one of the gifts that I've been given is to observe what people do. And people do amazing things. This was just one position I wanted to promote that I felt like I could speak to, aside from my personal job. I did not realize people behind me, who they were going to be here in force, and they're amazing, too. I don't really know where the money would come from. I really don't. I wish I could say. But no. I mean, I don't know what to say. The paper money, the supplies. Yeah. I appreciate your question, and I wish I had a better answer, but I don't.
Thank you so much, Mrs. King. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. As a principal at one of our larger high schools, one of the things with the activity coordinators position, the idea is that the-- one of the vice principals would pick up those things, and we've had that in the past, where that has been the case, before we started activity coordinators. My question is, can you give us just a quick snapshot of what impact that has today for having either assistant principal pick up those duties or having the activity coordinator have that? What difference does it make?
I guess my one worry I have as an AP is I'm not going to do a great job with promoting the activities and athletics as an activities coordinator would. Like, I need somebody, I need a plumber, but I'd rather pay someone with those expertise versus doing it myself. I could do it myself, but it's not going to be as good as someone with that experience. It's a huge load. I was reading an article, somebody said, sure, I can do some activities coordinator responsibilities, but I also have to do evaluations, I have to do discipline, I have to do curriculum, I have to do, you know. It's going to be tough if that position doesn't come back.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence. You'll have two minutes to testify, and then we will end with Savannah Fletcher.
Hi, I'm Viviana Pecic, P.E.C.I.C. I live in Fairbanks, and I'm here on behalf of my mom and cutting those five days. She already struggles. Like, money isn't the best all the time, you know? And the money in general, everything's getting super more expensive, so I'm struggling everything. But she goes through a lot, and it's very obvious, like, all the workers for special needs kids, they expand a lot of different things, and they can't talk about them. And coming home to see my mom, you know, after a long day of work, it sucks, because she isn't always in the best mood with the things she has to deal with. And she-- Money, like, she isn't getting paid good for what she has to deal with and what she goes through. And they deserve respect and everything, because it's horrible, the things she has to go through. I'm sorry. I don't exactly know what to say. Did not expect to come up here, but that's really it. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and don't ever apologize for testifying to the board. It takes a lot of courage, so thank you for coming. And we will end with Savannah Fletcher. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence. You will have two minutes to testify.
Yes, thank you. Savannah Fletcher, F.L.E.T.C.H.E.R. I live off the Parks Highway on the west side of town. And also, just first of all, thanks for your patience in letting me come back. It's a lot to balance on a summer evening, so I'm here, first off, in my personal capacity, not as a borough assembly member, but I'm speaking from things I've seen, both serving in that role and just as a community member here. I'm here in support of our ESSA workers. I'm here in support of giving them more hours, not taking hours away from them. I have a friend personally who works in the ABLE program, and from his firsthand experience, there's just a growing need for behavioral assistance for students, and I don't see how taking away days is going to fill an increasing load and need there, and it, in fact, will just lead to very direct consequences for our students. And I'm sure you all hear that, and I know that you're struggling to make ends meet financially as well. And I guess my question is, why didn't I hear this issue when we were voting on budget for the school district before? I tried to come through with additional funds, and I continue to think that directly supporting student services and the staff who serve them from before school opens to like after school closes at the end of the day, those are critical roles, and I just beg of you guys to not take more away from those positions. And I realize this might be more like a negotiation going on with the administration. I know, and our borough is negotiating, it's not always within our personal control, but just please hear us, these are critically important roles. We really need to support these staff members. And I think my friend who works in the ABLE program has even said he had lost energy to bother coming here and speaking for himself, because he said, I feel like every year, we're just used as another kind of pawn in these negotiation back and forths, and it just gets fatiguing. I think it's hard for anyone to stay here. He's busy working a summer job, like many people who are members of ESSA do. So let's not make it harder on them. Let's try to retain those that we have, who have given so much already, and that we continue to ask so much of. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. That concludes our testimony portion, our public testimony portion of our meeting. Next, we will have the Borough Assembly Report. Do we have a Borough Assembly Member present? Well--
[laughing]
Would you like to give a report? All right. So we do not have a Borough Assembly Report for this evening. Next, we have the President Report, and goal and objective is to ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. As I was thinking about what to report on for this evening, I immediately went back to this past year and all of the happenings from this last year. There has been a heavy lift with our community, with COVID, with our education, with resources. And with the conclusion, or with this school year concluding, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that happened this year and inform the community of the things that we'll be starting out with in the fall and to be aware of and to look out for. This past year, we extended the contract for our Chief School Administrator, Mrs. Moline, so she will be with us for this next year. And that directly goes into the biggest thing for our district and for this board, for the board, starting off this next year, is finding a new superintendent and starting that search early and ensuring that we have the opportunity to find the best fit for our district, to ensure that they are-- they have the qualifications, the excitement, the vision to move this district and continue the work, the powerful work that has been and continues to happen within this district. And so we will get that started immediately in August, start that process, and get that planned out for this next year. A big thing that we did this last year was the school repurposing and renaming Anderson With the school repurposing and with the middle school going six to eight, I am excited to see positive things come out, especially with the middle school moving six to eight. I have a son who's going into sixth grade. He is incredibly excited to go into Tannenaw. And I am excited to see him learn in a new environment and also be with his previous kindergarten teacher. So that'll be an exciting thing to see happen this next year. We continue to see the negotiation process happening and see that ebb and flow as the negotiations occur. And as you see, that FPA and ESSA are both on the agenda for this evening. The committee work, Mrs. Moline will be talking about that in a report later on this evening, that is ongoing, that no decisions are being made. It is an administrative report and recommendation for this evening, and that will be ongoing with the ad hoc committee that was created and already formulated and gave their proposal. And so this is information gathering, so that board can make the right decision for the board committees moving forward. And I'm excited to see how that will go out. And we had utilized AASB as a guiding force as we learned more about committees, how to be effective and efficient, and to be able to really impart change in our community and within our leadership opportunities and where we are. And of course, one of the biggest things that we have right now is budget. Many people asked why we don't have the budget on this evening's agenda, and we are currently waiting for our governor to finish up the budget, which Friday will be the very last day where it's due. Once we get the budget from the governor, we will be able to then reconvene as a board and discuss in more detail the finalities of the budget itself. And we are looking at either June 20th or 21st. Those are the two days that we are currently looking at, holding that particular budget meeting. We, of course, always appreciate testimony. We appreciate hearing the words of employees, community members, students, and to hear your personal experiences. And I do have to just say, I really appreciate always hearing students. We have had a lot of students come and testify this past school year. It is such a pleasure to hear the words of our students, the power of our students and their voices, and to know what it is that they really have to offer, suggestions that they have to make, and to hear their ideas and how we can all continue to improve the education system. I know this last year has definitely been interesting, a lot of ebbs and flows, a lot of ups and downs, and in the downs, crawling back up again and continuing to move forward. I know that we are a community of resiliency. We are a community that works together, that continues to find solutions to ensure that we can continue to keep moving forward. And so I appreciate that about this community. Back in 2005, I got off an airplane to drive tour buses as a college kid. Loved it so much, came back in 2006, that summer, and graduated from college, December of that year, and moved up here from North Carolina, January of '07, because I love this community, because there is something inherently incredibly powerful about this And one of those is the resiliency that we find within this community. And so I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the community. Thank you for the employees. Thank you for the students. Thank you for all the people that this board works with, and for all the board members, and all the hard work and effort, and countless hours and meetings and information that we digest, so that we can understand and better understand the decisions that we have placed before us. There's no place I would rather be than Fairbanks, Alaska. On that note, that concludes my President's Report. We are going to move on to the Chief School Administrator Report, which includes an update on school closures, transportation report by Durham School Service Representatives. Our goals and objectives is to ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected-- connected, and engaged with the district. Chief School Administrator Karen Maline will provide her report, including the update by Durham. Mrs. Maline.
Thank you, President Luke. So we're going to begin with our Durham partners. And as they're making their way to the podium with the district team, I'd just like to make a few opening comments. So as with so many things, the pandemic, it magnified issues that had already existed for some time. The challenges last year were a true magnification of ongoing issues. As far back as 2017, the board received a report that indicated they'd be starting the school year short, 20-plus drivers. So while it wasn't a new problem, it was magnified through the pandemic. And through all of this past year, Durham has been a real partner. We've been able to express our concerns or frustration and have some open conversations about realistic solutions and moving forward. So I would like to express my appreciation to Durham for their partnership and working with the district in a magnified, challenged issue. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team for their presentation.
Thank you. First of all, it's a privilege to be able to serve the district here. It's what we do. And this school year has been challenging. There's no doubt about that. Post-COVID labor participation has been extremely low, something we've never seen before. Traditional recruiting and retention efforts have not been as effective as they have been in the past. And the fruits of those efforts many times were compromised by changing business needs that we had this year that forced like our trainers to be on the road driving instead of training, putting us behind, you know, facing a stiff challenge to get people on the road to increase ridership. And, you know, it hasn't been for a lack of effort this year. Monetarily wise, we've spent a lot of money on bonuses, retention efforts. Coming in, we gave everyone a 10% pay increase to try to retain as many folks as possible. In the last 20 days of school, we put an attendance bonus in place to make sure that there were no more route reductions as we got towards the summer where we usually experience people leaving to go to their summer jobs. And we've spent a significant amount of money in recruiting, advertising, and training efforts. And none of that's going to change. That's what we have done. But what are we going to do? We're going to continue that monetary investment we have. We're invested here. We're here for 10 years. We're looking forward to recovery. It's tough all over, but we're looking for recovery in transportation and looking forward to being a good partner with the district and the borough here moving forward for the next 10 years. So we're going to continue that monetary investment. Right now, we're actually looking not only in Fairbanks, because your problem is not unique, we're looking at 108 different locations around the country where we face extraordinary wage pressure from competitors, not only trucking competitors, but service industries now that wages are increasing and are competing for the employee pool. And you're included in that 108 CSCs that we're looking at putting an extraordinary wage increase outside of the contractual increases that would be agreed upon with Teamsters to increase your wages going into next year to help retain and attract some additional employees. As far as recruiting efforts, we do have a dedicated corporate resource that we're using exclusively in Fairbanks that's assigned to the typical social media platforms and traditional types of recruiting. But in addition to that, we have an extensive grassroots effort that we've put in place. I was going to let Steve tell you a little bit about that because he's close to it. He's here every day. If you want to tell them about the grassroots efforts we have in place.
Sure, you bet. So as Jim was talking about, this has been a very educational year for me. It was my first year with Durham and the first year dealing with buses. Oh, I had a full head of hair in August. No, I'm kidding. But, you know, it's been very interesting because I've had to learn, think outside of the box because it's every day you're dealing with different things. And, you know, I keep talking about it's like having a handful of lures and you throw them out to the pond because you're just looking for that one lure that'll get the bite. So some things that we're working on right now, and again, we've had, well, we've had some things we've already done. We've got two open houses at site. We've had the outdoor show, the home show. We've entered our name there as well as had people sit there. But if you've been to the movie theater right now, we have a regal ad right out there. So if you guys go see a movie, you'll see us offering right there. Shopping carts, I thought that was a brilliant idea because we all have to get food, right? So there's an opportunity right there to see Durham right there. We're working currently with the Islestan Air Force Base for the Red Flag. I just blanked out on exercises right now that are happening in July, 9th through the 23rd. We'll be bringing those soldiers back and forth from the exercises. We're looking at some hiring events that typically will be four to six hours. So Employment Office, that'll be out 6, 13th through the 14th. The Library, June 23rd and July 7th. We'll be involved in the Golden Day Parade and have a table at the street fair in July. Working at the Tannenaw Valley Fair in August. Then scattered throughout the month of June and July, we've got different locations where we'll actually be bringing buses in and we'll have two people sitting at each bus for roughly four to six hours. So one will be at Sportsman's Warehouse, Lethrop High School, Bentley Mall Parking Lot, and Satters Parking Lot. So again, it's getting out there where people are seeing us and talking. We also have yard signs across Fairbanks, North Pole. We're dealing with the Gold Panthers this year. We'll be dealing with bringing the busing from the field to the airport and back and so forth. We're also looking at flyers at various locations, gas stations, you know, the baristas, huts around town, stuff like that. So, you know, I think the issue is that we are trying everything we could possibly think of outside of the box. And honestly, you know, I think we've got some bites on those lures, but it's again just trying to find that one lure that people are looking forward to. So please know the efforts are there. I want to second that this has been an amazing team to work with. The Transportation Department is phenomenal. You know, I know my staff really appreciates it. I really appreciate it. And I know the drivers and attendants that have worked for us are extremely appreciated. So, you know, we want to show that Durham is developing a great team because we want that relationship, we want that rapport, and we want that longevity of workers for this town. This is my, well, September will be starting my 30th year here. So, you know, I have grown my family here. I love Fairbanks, and I want to see this succeed. So appreciate your guys' support as well.
In addition to all those grassroots, kind of out-of-the-box deals we're doing, we've come to realize that retention is very important, maybe even as important as attracting new employees now, because if they're going out the back door as fast as they're coming in the front, it doesn't do us any good, right? And we have put together a pretty robust retention event schedule for the entire summer where Steve has regularly scheduled events every week, whether it be cookouts, variety of events where our employees can come in, bring their families, enjoy some food, touch base with them. More importantly, let them know, see how they're doing, see what support we can provide them when they're off during the summer, and let them know that we're here for them when they come back. And very excited to be able to give them the news about another off-cycle pay raise for when they come back this year. We think that'll be very important. But going into next school year, our goal's simple. You know, you said it, President Luke, that this is a resilient community. We are committed to be resilient ourselves, and our goal is to provide a reliable, sustainable service level with contingencies in place to mitigate any unforeseen circumstances that might come up next year like they did this year. We're obviously hoping we're on the other side of this deal, but I think I probably said that three or four times. So cautiously optimistic. We got a good plan. We got a good team, and we got good partners. And I'll end my piece by saying it is truly a privilege to be here. I appreciate your hospitality and thanks for having me.
Questions from the board? I'll start with Mr. Doran and then Ms. Maroni.
Thank you for being here tonight and for that outline. Coming in, my big thing was, what's the plan? I had a chance to ride on your buses back in August and visit both facilities in Fairbanks and in North Pole and was impressed with the preparation and layout that was there. My concern really comes down to what you were just talking about, looking at this coming year and trying to put everything in place. You also said, well, how do we mitigate the situations this coming year, you know, which we had to deal with this past year? So my concerns are that we started out short, not the full complement of routes that we expected. Drivers were brought up, they left soon to go back to jobs. And we quickly moved into drastic reductions in routes and inconsistent service.
Right.
You know, yes, it was under a steady schedule, but it was inconsistent. One week on, so many weeks off, that type of thing. That impacts our families. It impacts the attendance for our students. So I'm looking to see how we really, you know, I love all the different things and some of the new ones. Some are ones we've seen before, some are new ones. But I'm really concerned about the fact that, you know, and I want to, I do want to say, I'll get to my exact question, but I do want to say, really appreciate all the effort that the administrative level of Durham and the drivers have put out this past year. But it was not the service, our community. And so we're another year past recovery. We're still going to be recovering from COVID things. I know shortages, but I am really concerned. Durham has a new contract going into place for Matsu and I think 146 routes. So we're competing in-state for our things. Our parents really jumped in and helped out without the buses. We need the buses.
Sure.
That's mitigation.
Absolutely. And I mean, you asked me a question of my concern. I don't think concern is the right word. I think we have a, I think we have a big challenge, but I think we have put the things in place that we need to get where we need to be. I'm confident in the plan that we'll be able to give a service that's reliable. And I think Andy had a few words he wanted to say about what that looks like. We did some other things like bring vans into the area that coming into next year we're able to use to support and supplement some of those routes, to take some pressure off of those when the need arises. We're not going to go in there as that a plan to transport, but that'll be a plan to supplement if things go not as expected. And as far as Matsu goes, our experience in Matsu has been a lot different. Our, the transition in Matsu, we've already got over 150 drivers signed on and employed. So we already have a full complement of drivers there. And we're actually hiring additional supplemental drivers there right now, which the good thing about being in Matsu is if, you know, if we hire too many there and need to use them here for a while to get us where we need to be, we can do that. That doesn't need to be our primary plan, but it's our contingency, obviously. But Matsu is a much different dynamic. We already are starting with a full complement of drivers in Matsu.
And just if I may add to that, Jim kind of took my thoughts out of my mind. No, absolutely. I was going to look to you for confirmation, but I would see Durham's presence in Matsu as a positive because of the points that Mr. Ring just outlined. Additionally, I think there's a big message that we want to send out here tonight to the board, but more importantly, to the public, in that we are fully committed to not having rolling service closures, week off, week on, week off, week on next year. We are 100% committed. We will not do that again. So the floor that we're looking at is 100 routes. That's a floor. That's what we started with right in that area, the beginning of this school year, 100. Okay, that's the floor that we're looking at. And, you know, contingencies that Mr. Ring talks about would be, an example of that would be, you know, somebody might say, well, what if you don't hire enough drivers to provide 100 routes, right? Is that, you know, that's a reasonable question to ask. Well, we're not going to go to one week on, one week off. Then we would be forced to adjust stops, for example, to where unfortunately, in that unfortunate circumstance, we're not going to shut off your service for a week, but you would need to get, the stops would have to be adjusted from further into neighborhoods to closer to main arteries. That would be an example. But the upside is we're not going to shut service off to families for an entire week. So I just want that to be heard by the community and the public, that we're going to provide full service, not a rolling closure service next year. And that's, we're committed to that. So, but that's an example of a contingency that we would put into place if we don't come in with enough drivers. But I know Durham's shooting for a lot more than 100. It's in their best interest, if it's in everybody's best interest, to run as many routes as possible. So certainly 100 is not the goal. We're shooting for higher than that, but we're looking at 100 as a minimum.
Follow up and then put me in the key, just to follow up with that. Thank you both for responding to that. I am very pleased to hear we're not going to do alternate, but do I understand then what that may mean is fewer routes, but filling the buses more? Is that right? Is that how that would happen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just put me back in the key somewhere.
Any further questions from the board? Ms. Doran?
Okay. What's the projection? I mean, when we sat here and did the contract with Durham, we all had high hopes. Yes, things happened and such. What's the projection to get to what we expect? Are we two years out, three years out? I mean, we were looking at full number of routes, and I understand that if our enrollment goes up, we're down, or who's, where they are and where, you know, that has an impact of how many kids we're actually having to transport, which impacts that number. But quite frankly, at the time I was reviewing the Durham bid, you know, you're one of the top companies for student transportation in the country. And I understand all the challenges. What's our outlook?
Well, I, you know, gosh, I wouldn't have thought we're in the situation we're in right now, right? If you'd asked me a year ago. But, you know, right now, I think we're setting at 99, 100 drivers. So again, our efforts should be magnified this summer because we don't have our trainers on the route every day. So we can train six days a week. We can, you know, instead of having some of our, we've actually put some people that want to work part-time in the summer on these recruiting teams to go out in Canvis, the area, kind of beat the streets, so to say, for folks, start targeting those people in the service industry that are, you know, making anywhere from that $15 to $18, $19 an hour doing a job that possibly doesn't have a lot of benefits or a lot of, what do I want to say, meaning to them, like a service issue, right? So we started looking at, you know, advertising the job as a service job to where it's important for the community involvement, that type of thing. But, so we're setting at 100. We've, you know, we've got people in training right now behind the wheel. Instead of training them, letting them get their driver's license and go away and hoping for them to come back, we're going to gainfully employ them and pay them once they start in training this year so that we don't lose them before next school year starts. And, you know, I hate to put a timeline in some, but depending on the labor participation in this market, all of our social media and online ads last week, in the last 10 days, in the three top areas that I have in the Northwest, which is Fairbanks and Boise, Idaho, and Spokane, Washington, have produced 12 applications. That's not good news. That's bad. But what we have found is that our grassroots efforts are starting to produce a lot more folks. So, you know, it's not out of the question for us to hire 20 or 25 drivers this summer. And that would put us in pretty good shape. You know, then some retention, some plans we have for attendance bonuses, working with the borough with some stuff that's available to possibly put some retention money and to where if you start the school year, you have perfect attendance through the first quarter, through the second quarter, you get an incremental series of payments. We're looking at everything. But when you say two or three years, I just can't imagine that. That seems far away. But again, last year this time, I would have, I would have thought we were in better shape. But I really think going into the summer, we're in a good position because we can focus our efforts on training and recruiting and onboarding folks. I think we put a good wage together with this latest. Looks like it's going to be an additional $2.65 an hour. It's, looks like it's going to be an additional $2.65 an hour. So that puts us as the employer of choice in service industries, maybe not trucking industries, but service industries, where we can offer someone a real career with a tangible CDL, something no one can take away, a meaningful job that is more of a career than just a job. So.
Okay. Follow up.
Sure. And then we have Mr. Sampson.
I'm encouraged to hear the, the 99, 100 that you have right now, who have indicated they will continue and a target of 25 or better. Just the follow-up on the training issue. Last year, I know you ran into real problems about having enough trainers here so that you had people in training, but they couldn't do anything to address the bus concerns. Could you just give us that update where you are with trainers?
Let me, let me start and I'll let Steve wrap up because he knows the details, but we have remedied that. In late November, we, we contracted with the state of Alaska and had a special training class that they usually only put on every two years. We actually paid them to come here on site, do a week-long class of certified trainers and you have six, Steve, I think now, total trainers? So six trainers now. So, so that's been remedied. We actually, at the time, when you were speaking of one of the last meetings I was at, we only had like one trainer and it was difficult. Now, you know, our, our thought at that time was we were going to free those trainers up and they were going to train like crazy and we were going to have all these people. And then for a variety of reasons, you know, we had people quarantined because of COVID. We had people quarantined because of close contact, put us in a situation where not only trainers, but staff had to be on the road servicing students, took those, you know, you know, kind of stopped the progress of that training a little bit when they were on the road. So again, in position right now to be able to, to, to work that plan effectively.
I was just going to add that, for me, it's, it's been very educational to see how this training system works for transportation. When I first got there, there was one that could do DMV for the state, which is good for us to do in-house, that way we're not having to deal with, you know, Pega. The, also, we had three other trainers that could do classroom and then do behind the wheel BTW and starting that off. So now we have six. So there's actually six people that can do up to DMV. The issue is, is that you've got to have three that went through the class in November that were able to get to that DMV level, but you've got a shadow for so many hours before you can go out and do that. You've got to prove your competence. And so I think we're, we're getting to that point where we can do that. But it's interesting, if the four of us are trainers, I can do classroom, Jim can do BTW, then you have a state test over here for BTW, then you have a state DMV and none of us can cross. So it's very interesting and it's, it's like that shell game where you're trying to work a, a reasonable path to gain as much as you can and still conduct it. Because you could have, I could have 20 people in class, but it could be two to three weeks of completion time for each individual. So you've got to work with your crew to be able to, to get that accordingly. And that depends on everyone's schedule. So not, not every applicant can just sit there and go through class, you know, day by day by day.
And I guess the key is when they're off the road in the summer, we can do that very effectively.
Correct.
It's difficult to do when they're, when they're, when they're driving routes.
All right. So is the trainer concern addressed for this August or?
Yes.
I think it is, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Ring, Mr. Steele. I just want to say thanks for coming in. Thanks for giving the feedback to the, to the board and as Andy said, more importantly, to the community. I want to say thanks for thinking outside of the box, some of the different ways to address the issue. Thank you for assuring both the, the community, the students and the families that we won't be going back to a rolling schedule. We tried that. It was just a, a way to try and make things work. It wasn't something that was really pleasing to, to many families. And thank you for, for going and finding, going a different route. Thank you for working closely with the state to work through some of that red tape and to address the training issues. I know there's some stipulations with the state there that were hampering in nature. Thank you for reaching out and working with the, with the borough. It sounds like there's possibly some works in progress there. And also thank you for working with the Teamsters Union. That's, that's about it. I just want to say thanks. Thanks for coming in and, and I know you guys don't have a crystal ball. Things could get a lot easier here in the near future or, or it could get tougher. We, you know, tomorrow's, tomorrow's a new day.
Let's go with easier.
Yeah. We'll, we'll shoot for, for positive outlook, but thanks for your dedication and, and we all know here downtown that, you know, financially what's, what's beneficial to Durham is, is more routes.
Sure.
And so we know that you care about the students, but you're a private business and, and we, we trust that you're shooting for more routes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Good evening and thank you for your report. So when you were talking about the crossing over from, is that like state, local, federal? Where you couldn't cross over?
No, if, if a trainer is doing the classroom, so there's 20 hours of classroom, that trainer cannot teach behind the wheel. So it has to be a different trainer that teaches those students behind the wheel. And then if the behind the wheel is done, that's another 20 hours to do the state final for that, you can't be involved in either one of those. So it's a, it's a training regiment that has been established by the state that says you can't have a cross trainer. So essentially what it does is it proves that I did my job teaching, it proves that they did their job teaching, and then the tester is, you know, ambiguous. He, he has no, it's a third party, true third party viewing. So it just makes it a cleaner testing.
Okay. Cause I was just thinking in my mind that maybe a conversation with our interior legislators, if there was something that could be done in policy or state regulations or something like that, but thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Mr. Oh, Mr. DeGraw and then Mr. Dorn?
I'll, I'll just give a final statement if I may. So I'll, I'll defer. Is it okay if I defer to Mr. Dorn?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
My last question. And understanding we none of us have that crystal ball, but again, I'm thinking towards the future. We've partnered with you for 10 years. So my question is, you mentioned several times, referenced compete, having to compete with the whole trucking industry. Okay. We have Kinross Mines and a big trucking project that's coming pretty quickly, just in another year or way before it really comes in. What's your thinking, positioning to help make sure that, you know, we get through this year, but then we're looking at the same thing next year or whatever? But you know, the, you get the gist of where I'm looking?
Yeah, that's a tough one. Obviously our, our thought process and our strategy has evolved over the last few years with, with, with this market. But again, I, I think long-term strategy as we, as we talk about this, there's all kinds of things that are thrown out there and how the industry has to change itself. You know, because we are part-time and that's tough, difficult or to, to deal with full-time people. But there are still a segment of folks that we need to find and market to that need a part-time job and work in the business because of the service aspect for it, right? And I think we need to target that. You hear all the time that, you know, even teachers, right? Teachers are, work a lot of hours, they'll make a lot of money, or social workers, for instance, but they still do it because they love, they do it and there's a, there's a call to serve. And I think we need to concentrate on finding that group of people that look at this as a rewarding job, a job of service and a job that's important in the development of the kids. And, you know, making sure that we continue to partner with the district so that our drivers feel like they're part of the community, the district community, the borough and just look for those folks that are in this, maybe for a different reason than, because we, we're never going to be able to compete with a $50 an hour job, right? That would change the dynamics of our relationship greatly, wouldn't it? But, but what we can do is find the right people to do the job that are doing it for the, for a different reason other than just monetary gain, I think. And, and I think as we look at ways to market people in the future, we'll, we'll figure out a way to, to market to those folks and, and let them know that this is a, you know, a, a job of service and calling. That's, that's, that's my thought as far as visionary now, you know? That's one opinion from one guy that really wants to run 130 routes in, in Fairbanks. So, yeah.
Well, I, I appreciate that perspective and I just want to reaffirm for any bus drivers out there, or people thinking about it is that they are integral members over at the educational team. And I've personally, as a principal for many, many years, working with bus drivers have found ones who made a real difference for individual kids. It's that opportunity to greet them every morning, take them home every, every day. And that service component is, is really alive and well.
Sure.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, President Luke. Just a couple of last final points I wanted to make. One is we are obviously working under a specific contract that we have with, with Durham that was put in place, it was agreed upon a couple of years ago now. Many, several circumstances have changed since that initial contract was put in place. And so it's in both the district's and Durham's best interest to go back to the table and renegotiate some very specific points in that contract centered around number of routes and finances. Again, there's benefit for the district and there's also benefit for, for Durham, our contractor. And so we'll be doing that over the summer and we will be ready to present new contract terms to the board in the fall, at some point, early fall. And again, circumstances have obviously changed significantly. I think the, you know, 130 routes are in the current contract. Is it realistic that we're going to be able to provide 130 routes on, on August 20th? That's debatable, but, but we're, we'll be looking at that. So just wanted to put that on the board's radar. And lastly, I just want to personally send out my thanks to, to the past year plus that we've been able to work with Durham. I, I know there's been a lot of frustration this year. I've shared in that frustration. Durham has shared tremendously in that frustration. I do second Mr. Dorn, Dorn's point about the resiliency of our drivers and the integral part of the operation that they are. They are, they've been extremely resilient through the year and, and we appreciate their efforts, but it's been a frustrating year for everybody. And, and, you know, parents chipped in, you know? I, I'll say this, you know, I myself took a turn driving my kids to school on weeks and while there were hiccups and there were bottlenecks and clogs at different times and at different locations, I witnessed a lot of resilient parents flowing through schools and doing a phenomenal job of chipping in and, and the families and parents of our community were resilient as well. I will say this, however frustrating it was, I truly believe that we took a lousy situation and did the best we could with that. I 100% believe that and I know that to be true because we've had experiences in the past where communication was lacking. I'll say this, when there was a problem, the folks here locally communicated those problems to us immediately. And what difference did that make? That helped us come up with contingency plans. Those contingency plans weren't ideal, but it was the best we could do in a lousy situation. And, and so I know that to be true, that we took a lousy situation and made the best that we could out of it. And so I appreciate that from Durham. They've made a significant financial investment in our community. The facilities are phenomenal, they have. Another point that was a big difference maker that they have brought to our operation here is the fuel, the, the manner in which we purchase fuel. I don't know if you, some board members might recall, we were able to negotiate a bulk fuel tank on their location and that has saved the district hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, miles more than what we anticipated. And so I just want to thank Durham and acknowledge the challenges that we've faced the last year, but thank them for the communication, the partnership that we've had because again, it's allowed us to make the best that we could out of, out of really challenging circumstances. So, and I look forward to again, providing that full service to families and students in our community next year without those, those rolling closures. That'll be a big deal for our families. So I'm, I'm glad we're to that point.
Thank you. And again, thank you to our, our Durham partners. And I want to just give a hearty here, here to everything that Mr. DeGraw said about our partnerships, about our families, and then about launching into the future. I think it's, it's a brighter, better future. We learned a lot of things this year. We made a lot of adjustments and I'm very optimistic about going into next year with our, our transportation. And, and I, and Mr. DeGraw said it, and I believe our Durham partner said it, we are committed to no rolling schedules. Whatever we need to do to make sure we deliver a consistent, reliable service, that's what we're going to do. So, so thank you for your participation in, in our report today and look forward to good things next year.
Thank you for having us. And again, it's our privilege. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and complete superintendent's report now. And my next topic will be the budget, which President Luke has already talked about. As of today, at 5:01, the governor has not yet signed the bill, so we're still waiting for that to happen. But once that is done, then we're poised and ready to complete the budget process. The next topic I want to just hit on is the school, school closure updates. Shipping and receiving has been such an important part of this whole process. They've been transporting pallets and materials, delivering them to their appropriate school. So at this point, they have transported most of the equipment and materials needed for Best and Smart to set up housekeeping in our, our new Nordale Education Center. There'll be one final push where, where the teachers and staff carry out the coffee maker and start working over at the new facility. And that's going to be happening in the next couple of weeks. With the, them working over there, there's unpacking to be done, but we're looking at by July 1 being up and operational in, in that building and parents can come in and enroll and, and see the facility at that point. We're planning at an open house barbecue coming up this summer. We're looking at possible dates. So that's for the, that particular move. The Anderson Crawford move, pallets have been moved from Anderson to Crawford with classrooms identified. Projectors have been, protectors and smart boards, et cetera, have all been moved from Anderson to Crawford and signed a room. We've begun the interior shutdown of the building with locks and things being removed. So that project is moving along quite well. There's a few materials left and there are surplus type materials that shipping and receiving will, will deal with, but our priority up to this point has been moving Best and Smart into their facility. With Joy, all the pallets for moving have been concentrated in the gym and shipping and receiving is moving them to the appropriate school and the appropriate teacher classroom. Hunter, Weller, Lad and New Park have all had their deliveries made. I believe Ryan and Tanana had theirs delivered today. And with Ann Ween, we're going to be keeping their, any materials going to Ann Ween. We'll be keeping them at Joy until after summer school because we have some summer school programs happening in Ann Ween. Teaching and learning materials, there's still some at Joy that they'll be working through these next few weeks, but our teaching and learning teams are also working in our summer school programs. So we're, they're kind of doing double duty there through the, through the summer months. In Nordale, there's, again, the staging area is in the gym and the pallets are palletized with markers and identifications as to where they'll go. So, so that'll be done throughout the summer as well. And the FMD team has once again shown themselves to be phenomenal in all this moving and if they, if shipping and receiving has needed a truck driver or someone to deliver something, FMD jumps in and makes it happen. They've been working as a, as a really good partnership in making all of these, this moving happen. And while all of this is happening, they're continuing to do their summer cleaning, carpet cleaning, deep cleaning, disinfecting, getting ready for students in the fall. Carpet cleaning, deep cleaning, disinfecting, getting ready for students in the fall. So just a big shout-out to FMD and Teaching and Learning for pulling the double duty and making it happen. So finally, I want to kind of wrap up a few thoughts around our strategic planner. Number-one focus being student success. That's what we're about, that's what we do. And while school, the traditional school term is over and we've kind of closed the door on that year, learning is still happening all across our district. I have just a brief summary of all that's happening across our district. It started the last week in May and is continuing through this week. There's six different programs for high school students who need credit recovery or support in getting credits for graduation. That's six different programs available. There's a CTE class that happened for girls who weld and that purpose of that program was to expose girls to welding and other related courses in the CTE world. There's a CTE class specifically created for special education students. There are three Ready Raven programs, which are for four- and five-year-olds specifically designed to prepare them to come into kindergarten and sort of to act as a jumpstart into kindergarten. There's two summer programs that are run by our after-school programs and funded through our 21st Century Grant programs. There's Summer Academy for migrant students. There's Summer Reading Club for our ELL students, both for high school and elementary school students. There's a UAF Cooperative STEM Academy. There's a STEM camp happening at Ileson and it's designed for third through eighth graders for STEM courses for kids of active military personnel and it's funded through one of our DODIA grants, a very successful and exciting experience to be a part of. We have five programs designated specifically to support our special education students in their point of need. So that is like a high-level look at all of the learning that's happening for students across the district. At the same time, teachers are taking advantage of professional development courses ranging from literacy instruction to food service training is happening this summer. So while the traditional school district year may be over, the learning continues 12 months out of the year across our district. And then looking forward in to next year, there is a real air of anticipation and excitement as we plan and prepare for next year. Our middle school leadership teams are, will be attending a summer conference as they prepare to build a structure that works for their building. I attended the BEST end-of-the-year picnic and I was able to talk to several parents and staff members and hear their excitement about the opportunities for a new facility. They're looking forward to the new space and all the different opportunities that will be there. We've proved through the challenges of last year that we can rise to almost any occasion and maintain an in-person learning environment for those who choose that brick-and-mortar as their choice. And we've demonstrated that we can offer quality options through e-learning and BEST. And we're committed, moving into next year, to make those things happen and continue to happen. So with that, that's the end of my report.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, President Luke. To Ms. Maline, could you give us an update either through you or Ms. Coriol Jade of our summer security, what's that's going to look like, especially related to the buildings that we're closing down?
So how are our buildings being monitored? Well, at this point, all of our buildings are set up as they've always been. So we have the ability to look into our buildings and see what's going on. And in all of our buildings, there's still consistent activity, so we have people in and out of the buildings regularly. And that will remain in place until we pass the buildings over to the boroughs. So we'll maintain all of our continued monitoring. What will change on a little bit is on July 1st, for the two buildings, Joy and Anderson, the internet will no longer be available for those buildings. So that'll be June 30th. So any work that's continuing after July 1 with the facilities team, they'll have to do without internet.
I had a follow-up question.
I can add to that as well. We are, we do have a two-security team that is monitoring also around the building. And then even with the Joy internet down, we still have two lines that's going to remain open for the trouble alarms and fire and our emergency response team.
Thank you.
I have Ms. Marotti and then Mr. Doran.
Thank you. Can you confirm which programs at this time are being moved into Nordale? At this point, we have our BEST program moving in there, SMART is moving in there. Our e-learning program will be working out of the educational center. We have some special education programs that will be kind of headquartered in there. We have our APLE folks will be working out of there. And our CIP training will happen out of that building too. Did I say that right? CIP? CPI. Okay, CPI training. I'm getting my acronyms mixed up. Yeah, so that'll happen out of that as well. And we'll also do our child find events in that building. And that building will be far more suited for our child find events. It's ready-made for kids to come and participate in all kinds of, you know, activities. So I think we're well-set up for our child find activities there as well as the different trainings in our APLE program.
I have Mr. Doran and then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you for that extensive report and the updates. And I may have misheard or missed it. Update on Bridge and its move. And the other question was, you were highlighting programs this month, and I'm not sure I caught it right or was under a different title. Introduction to Building Trades, I think we had students involved in at Pipeline Center.
A CT, yeah. That was a CTE course that happened as a part of our trade courses.
Okay, great, thank you.
So yes, with Bridge, we are moving to be out of our rented facility by June 30th and we're pretty much on target for that. We have moved pallets over to Lathrop. They're ready, they're being unpacked and classes are set up. We're doing a little bit of looking into the Lathrop facility to make it, to maximize the program in that facility. But we are looking to be out of the rented facility by June 30th and have everything over to Lathrop by the first.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Doran. That was kind of where I was, wanted to know more information about the Bridge. In the closing down of that building, is there anything required of our district to move walls or do anything like that to exit that building?
At this point, I don't believe so. I haven't heard any major stuff, you know, basic cleaning things, run the vacuum cleaner, that kind of thing. But other than that, no.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. I did go with Ms. Maline and take a look at the new facilities that Bridge will be using at Lathrop. And they seem perfectly acceptable and useful for the program. Of course, there's a few modifications that will take place incrementally over time to keep making it better. But I did go and look at that facility and it's going to be great for the students. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment from the board. Thank you so much, Mrs. Maline, for your report. Currently, we have no unfinished business, so we will move into new business action items. First on the list is the Fairbanks Principals Association Negotiated Agreement Ratification. Goals and objectives: Create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. The negotiated agreement between the Board of Education and the Fairbanks Principals Association, or FPA, will expire on June 30, 2022. The tentative agreement between the School Board and FPA was reached on May 23, 2022, and was ratified by the vote of FPA members on May 24, 2022. The two-year agreement will be effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to ratify the tentative agreement between the Fairbanks Principals Association and the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we, we currently have no one on the list for testimony? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on the FPA? If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
My name is Flora Roddy. I live in Fairbanks. Excuse me. I am very happy that the principals were able to reach a contract, a tentative agreement. I am hoping that the rest of us, at some point soon, will be going to be able to get a tentative agreement as well. When you think about how much a principal makes compared to how much an S.A. person makes, a 1% raise for a principal is a lot more money than a 1% raise for an S.A.'s staff. So I'd just like to remind you to think about that and wish our bargaining teams well when bargaining goes back up.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Any further testimony? Seeing none, testimony is now closed. I'd like to go to administration. Anything further from administration?
Nothing further.
Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Marotti.
I'm not quite sure who to ask or if we can know, but I noticed that the FPA agreement shows a non-recurring payment of $1,000 payable by December 2022, a 1% match to the 403B, and a 1% salary increase, and no changes to the health plan. And I want to confirm that a similar monetarily equitable offer has been made to the other bargaining agreements.
I will uphold that point of order because that's not specifically on only this negotiation.
Can I reword it then? I can't make a decision on this without confirming that it is equitable with the other bargaining agreements, or that it will be equitable with the other bargaining agreements.
Mr. Doran.
If I might, to the point here, I'm supportive of this agreement. What I think we need to keep in mind is that negotiations are still going on with the other units. This is the one that has been satisfied that is before us. And other negotiations could be more favorable or less favorable, it doesn't, or equitable. So my looking at this, this is the agreement that this association has come to and I'm supportive of that and look forward to whatever other associations, those will come to us later on.
Mrs. Matheson.
Mr. Doran said exactly what I was about to say.
Mrs. Smith.
I will concur also with Mr. Doran that I'd like to stay focused on this contract and that the other negotiations are their own entities.
Mr. Doran.
I'd like to address the FPA contract that is before us, the negotiated agreement, and really thank the negotiating parties on both sides of the table for all of these negotiations. It is a working together and working through issues and problem-solving together. And I appreciate all the time that this particular one represents, that was put in by the district team and the FPA team. And I also want to just express appreciation for the principals with their staffs for all the work they've done, particularly the last couple of years and this year with really helping students make the full transition back to school, covering a lot of bases. And they're part of a team, but also want to recognize them for their individual contributions to that team.
I have Ms. Anderson and, oh, did you not? Okay, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you. I'd like to call a question.
I object.
Let's go to the vote. So if you say yes, we are, you are in support of calling to question. And if you say no, you want to continue discussion on this particular matter.
Are there members in the queue that?
There are no members in the queue. The only one I had was Mr. Sampson. And when I asked Ms. Anderson, she said no.
Okay. Colonel Williamson.
No.
Thank you. Colonel Suri.
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
No.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti.
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran.
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke.
No.
Motion failed.
Are there any other questions from the board or comments from the board? Any other questions or comments that administration would like to make?
No.
Mrs. Tuttle, we're ready for the vote.
Colonel Suri.
No.
Thank you. Colonel Williamson.
No.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti.
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of non-represented employee group step movement, stipend payment, one-time non-recurring payment, and 403B employer match. Goals and objectives: Create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. The board has approved a salary table for the non-represented employee group with established steps. Steps are not automatic and may only be authorized by board action. The chief school administrator is recommending the board authorize the non-representative employee group step movement for eligible employees. A stipend of $1,000 for those employees who have reached the maximum step and are not eligible for step advancement. A one-time non-recurring $1,000 payment for all non-represented staff by December 2022. An up to 1% employer match of the employee's annual salary into the employee's 403B supplemental retirement account for the 2022-2023 school year. There will be a 0% increase in the salary table for 2022-2023. There will be a 0% increase in the salary table for 2022-2023. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to authorize the non-represented employee group step movement for eligible employees, stipend of $1,000 for those employees who have reached the maximum step and are not eligible for step advancement, a one-time non-recurring payment of $1,000 for all non-represented staff by December 22, and up to 1% 403B employer match for the 2022-2023 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is now a motion on the floor. We do have some people signed up for testimony on this. We have Sandy Ryan. If you will come forward, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
I always think it's funny when you call me, then tell me to state my name. Good evening again. My name is Sandy Ryan, R-Y-A-N. I reside in Fairbanks, and I am the president of the Education... Fairbanks Education Association. I came to say thank you for considering letting those that cannot necessarily have a spokesperson for themselves the opportunity to get a percentage raise. It's not really a percentage, but to get something on their salary. When you go into a year with 0% increase on the salary schedule, that means you don't have anything if you are topped out. Many of us in the Fairbanks Education Association live there. We live at the bottom or the top, depending on how you look at the salary schedule, and then we get nothing. So recognizing that there is a need, especially with the inflation, cost of living, gas prices, food, housing, and all the other things, I think it is a wonderful offer, and I appreciate it. Also recognizing that having that 0% means that you are indeed taking a pay cut and the extra $1,000 stipend, which we can't really call a bonus because you didn't really put anything back on the schedule or you're considering not, so it's not in the buff that would normally be done, but that's good. The downside is that this is a one-time deal. So we know that folks that are sitting here that are taking this one-time deal, possibly $2,000, they cannot look forward to it for next year. It's not going to be something they're going to see. That indeed makes me sad. Every educator in this district, whether they're FEA, ESSA, FPA, or the non-representative alike, faced countless obstacles and challenges for the past two years. They risen to the occasion for you. Every FNSB employee needs to be recognized beyond simply lip service for the work and dedication that they have shown. I thank you for the considerations, and if they can be added to the schedule, that would be really indeed a bonus. Thank you.
And I still have 10 seconds left. You had 10 seconds last time.
I know.
Ms. Morady?
Thanks. As FEA president, can you confirm or deny if the... If in your bargaining unit is a stipend for those employees who have reached the maximum step and are not eligible for step advancement?
We need to stick to this.
I'm reading the move... the motion.
But you asked in her bargaining unit?
To compare the two?
I can say that we're still bargaining, so, I mean, I can say that, right? I can say, "We're still bargaining." So since it's not coming before you, we're still bargaining. That's... Is that a fair answer? Did I do that right? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we... There are still things that could come to the table there, but we are in suspension because our educators are 184-day contract, and so they're not under contract, and we will pick up again in the fall. So we are suspended for the moment until August. I hope I did that well.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ryan, for coming down today. I just wanted to seek some clarity on a statement that I find presumptuous in nature. When you reference the one-time funding bonus, as you put it, it's actually... It's this time. You alluded... You said it's not going to be something they are going to see next year, for the following year and the following contract. Did I misunderstand that? Due to the fact that it's only one time, we're under the presumption that it won't be realized in the following year?
Well, since it's not on the salary schedule, that would then be realized next year, it would have to be re-approved as a bonus or stipend, again, annually. Could that happen? Absolutely, but it's nothing that they can count on.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
There was not a done deal. Yeah. It wasn't like you're never going to do it again. That's not one of my intent.
Yeah, okay, because our funding is yearly.
Yes, your funding is yearly, yes, based upon the formula, yeah.
Any further questions? Thank you so much, Ms. Ryan.
You bet.
Next, we have Wendy Demers. If you'll come up. I apologize, I've got to say it. State your name, spell your last name, state your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Hi, I'm Wendy Demers, D-E-M-E-R-S, and I'm in Fairbanks. In the action item, I'm speaking about your proposing that the non-representative staff are getting three things. If they are maxed out on steps, they get $1,000 instead of step increase. They get $1,000 stipend in lieu of salary increase, and they get 1% of their salary out into their 403B account. In essence, they will be getting a raise in their base pay and extra money in their retirement accounts, all while two of the bargaining units are still fighting for what you are willing to offer to non-union staff. This frankly is a slap in the face to every ESSA and FPA member. You are doing this all while cutting the pay of those who are working directly with students that you are charged with providing an equitable education to. When you consider these raises, please consider how your actions tonight speak volumes to the other hard-working employees who are not included in these pay increases. I feel it is wrong to create division between the union and non-union employees. This is... This is underhanded. This district states that its mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe, supportive environment so that all students will succeed to a... Sorry. So that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. You can't do this if you are unwilling to adequately pay those who work directly with students. We have all heard many times at contract negotiations, at budget committee meetings, that we are in a budget crisis. If we can find the funds to give raises to some of the employees, we should find the funds to make these raises equitable to all employees, those who work directly with our students every day. I just want to say in a side note that if this district continues to pick and choose when to follow district policies depending on the employees and impacts, the morale will continue in a downward spiral. Thank you.
We had a question from Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. Have you taken your request to have this similar language in your own membership's negotiated contract to your representation?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that because that's the appropriate way to get it into your contract. So if this is what you want?
I've said in on many of the negotiation sessions.
Mr. Sampson, and then Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Ms. Demers... Demers? You use the terminology "the board is underhanded." We're using underhanded-natured tactics when we offer a pay increase.
To some staff and not all staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening.
Thank you.
Is there any other testimony, any other person here in the room that would like to provide testimony this evening on this topic? Seeing none, testimony is now closed for this item. Is there anything further from administration?
Yeah, I would like to just make some things clear for the board. In this, in the non-representative contract, there's the... The $1,000 stipend for those who have reached the top of the scale. And for this particular group, that has... They haven't had that every year. And for... And you might have noticed that this proposal mirrors the FPA agreement almost exactly. The difference is that in the FPA agreement, that $1,000 for the top is a part of the negotiated agreement, so that happens for them every year. Everyone that's at the top of the FPA salary range gets that $1,000. For our... For our non-represented folks, it's not necessarily in their contract, so it needs to be an intentional and explicit part of their compensation. So I wanted to clarify the difference in that, that I'm sure you noticed that it mirrors the FPA agreement. The other thing I think is important for the board to realize and just know is that for our district, the folks that work in the non-represented class, as we compare the salaries to like jobs across the state, are significantly lower than the other larger districts in our state. Comparatively, our non-representative folks are paid some significantly, some comparably lower than other places. So we have a bit of an unbalance happening in our non-represented group that I think at some point we're going to have to address or will find ourselves in a more difficult situation than we're already in for recruiting for positions in that group. We already have a real challenge uphill any time we have to fill a non-representative... A non-represented position. It's difficult to entice people within the district to come and work in those positions because many of them actually take a pay cut if they come and work a 12-month job in that group. So I just want to make sure the board is aware going into the future that this is a group that has for some time... Well, for the past three years, they've been operating under the same contract, and it is something that, at some point, we're going to have to look at seriously if we want to retain people in the positions that fall into that category. So I... Just for those clarifications in the memo and what's actually being on the table for this particular group.
Do you have Mr. DeGrau who...
Oh.
Would you like for him to...
All right. I'm sorry, hidden feedback there.
I appreciate Ms. Millen's comments and just add to hers just to point out specifically that there is zero salary schedule increase, no percentage increase for non-represented. That's another, aside from the differences that Ms. Millen pointed out, from the FPA agreement, there's a second year of a 1% increase for FPA. There is no second year with a 1% increase for non-represented. Want to point that out. I would also like to just point out for the public that the administration made several attempts to get to the point of negotiating one-time bonuses and salary increases with both ESSA and FEA, and we were unsuccessful in getting to that point. Thank you.
Question... Mr. Doran?
Ms. Millen, thank you for that explanation. But also to clarify, am I correct that the stipend at the max, for those who don't have step advancement, our other employee contracts do provide that, not just FPA, but it's in the other contracts? Is that correct?
Yes, but I think we need to have a caveat to that. Ms. McDaniel, would you?
We did. I went back and looked today after a request, I think, from Ms. Morady to confirm the step out... Excuse me, the max-out stipend is in the ESSA contract. It's in the non-rep contract. It's in the FPA contract. It is not in the FEA contract. So it is $1,000 across the three bargaining groups to which it is in the contract, but it is not included in the FEA contract. And I did a quick search just a second ago, and I don't believe it's in any of the initial proposal... In the initial proposal, that was provided by FEA either.
Thank you for that clarity.
Ms. Morady?
Ms. McDaniel's answered my question that I've been trying to ask repeatedly, and you silenced me. So I thank you for answering that question finally.
Any further questions from the board? Mr. Doran?
I just want to comment on this, that in supportive of this, glad to see it come before us. I appreciate the fact that the non-represented employees don't go through negotiations, and they're very much dependent on board action. And I've personally sat... This'll age me because it was in the Old U Park Gym where the board used to meet and sat there at the time that the other negotiated... Our associations had all completed negotiations or were currently under contract with increases, and the non-represented staff got zero. And I do remember very much the mood in that room as the board made that decision. So I'm really glad to see this, glad to see the... What actually FEA, I believe, initiated the 403B employer match, employer-employee match, that we're broadening that out. And I think that is beneficial in a time when we have a lack of investment in public education at the state level in particular at this point. And that this is a challenging time, but I'm glad that we can do this and take care of two of our employee groups tonight. And I look forward to being able to take care of our other two groups in the future. But I'm supportive of this, and I thank the administration for bringing this recommendation forward to the board.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I'm also supportive of this, and I just wanted to thank the FPA, which I neglected to do during their contract discussion, as well as the non-represented employees for really recognizing that they're leaders and that if there was something to give, I think the team would give it. And they are understanding our financial situation and working as a team and really acting as leaders in our community. So I wanted to say I appreciate that, and I support this contract.
Mrs. Millen?
We have one other contract... One other comment. Mr. DeGrau?
And just again, specifically related to the non-represented contract, Ms. Millen referenced the salary disparities that we see around the state and to follow up on Mr. Doran's example of a one-year event. If you extrapolate, you look at a 10- to 20-year long-term average of salary increases with the four different units in our district, the non-represented salaries lag dramatically, the salary increases of the three bargained negotiated units. And so, yeah, the anecdotal stories that people remember over time are backed up by long-term analysis.
Mr. Doran?
Just want to add a note of appreciation for the central office staff. I often enough knew as a principal, when I picked up the phone, I needed somebody, and there was somebody in central office. And if somebody wasn't there, it had an impact on the school and on the classroom. And so I really appreciate the effort that the non-represented staff put in. And certainly, they're part of the team with a lot of others, particularly ESSA staff and et cetera, and other FEA staff who are part of that team. But I appreciate what central office does. And with that, can I take the opportunity to extend to 9:45, given the...
Second.
Agenda?
Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, we're extended until 9:45. Any last thoughts from administration before I go to the vote?
No.
Mrs. Tuttle, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is approval of Discovery Peak Charter School revised charter bylaws. Core value: maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. During the 2021-2022 school year, the Discovery Peak Charter School Academic Policy Committee, APC, made significant changes to its charter bylaws to better align the bylaws to the charter school's current operations. Included in the agenda are the previous bylaws, the proposed bylaws, as approved by the charter school's APC on May 2, 2022, and the outline explaining the changes. The proposed revised charter bylaws are now before the school board for approval. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve the revised charter bylaws of Discovery Peak Charter School as presented and approved by the Discovery Peak Charter School Academic Policy Committee on May 2, 2022. Second.
We do not have anyone signed up for testimony, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to give testimony to this topic? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. I'd like to turn the time over to administration.
Yes, thank you. So just to kind of ground us in the work here, the APC has worked with their body, with AASB, and created bylaws that align with their charter and their values in their charter. And then the work of the board is to approve these bylaws or not. So they've done with their work with AASB and with their APC. So that's kind of their background and how they've approached this. So then it's the board's decision, but I appreciate the work that the APC did and the work that it takes to go through this kind of a process.
And then I'd like to give them a moment to give us a synopsis, and then we can go to the board for questions.
Okay, yes. So as was discussed a month ago when we were here for our contract renewal, we are proposing new updated bylaws that put us in alignment with what was recommended by the professional development that we did with AASB last fall. That professional development was very eye-opening to us and gave us a lot of direction on how we could put ourselves in a position to be very effective for Discovery Peak. The changes that we have made to bylaws, while yes, visually look very extensive, essentially what that is doing is putting us in alignment with AASB's recommendations. And so we've wordsmithed things a little bit from our original bylaws and added the portions that were missing. If Shannon Trizino, she is our APC president, is here with me this evening, so if she's got anything else to add, otherwise we're here really just to answer any questions. Hopefully, you did have a chance to review the documents that were provided to you upon your request last month. And yeah.
Really quick, just wanted to mention that. So originally, when this was created, the school was created, they created an APC that functioned more like an APC and a PTA. We realized very quickly that that wasn't going to work, and we needed a governing body. And that's why these bylaws were adjusted.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Just so you know, I do have several questions. But I want to thank you for going back and coming back to us with slightly different revisions, et cetera. But my first question is to administration. Has the administration reviewed these? And do you have a recommendation or any concerns about what's here? And the reason is, because I think even though there were some returns about other policies that were brought before us from the administration side, but I want to know what the recommendation is from the administration.
Yes, we have looked over them, the old bylaws. And I think that our APC president did a really good job of synthesizing the need for the changes. We have looked over them. We think that they'll align with Discovery Peak's charter and their mission. So we would recommend approval of these bylaws.
And they're in keeping with, well, okay, I'll leave it there. So I can be in the queue whenever you want.
Any other board members with questions? Mr. Sampson?
Can you explain to the board and the public who votes on the incoming new APC members?
So now what happens is that there's a nomination that's sent out to the families of the school, and they're given time to review those nominations, and then they get to vote. So it is the families, the stakeholders of that school that get to vote.
And can you clarify the difference between the staff members? And you're saying, what I just heard you say is it's the families that will be voting on the APC. And the APC is made up of both community members and parents in conjunction with staff members. So what you're telling me is that the families are voting on the staff member positions on the APC?
The family members, the current APC members, they're all get to vote on, yes, who are the staff positions and who are the community and family members.
Okay, so that's really confusing. So can you tell me who votes? You're telling me the current APC members votes on who's going to be on the APC, or the community, the parents, the families vote on, and do they, on the members of the APC? And do they vote on just the family members, just the parents and community? Or do they also vote on the APC staff members that are on the APC?
All vacant seats are posted to the ballot, and all voting members, families, staff, APC members, are able to vote on each of those seats, on all vacancies.
APC members vote on the APC members?
Yes, on the vacant seats.
Okay.
So the current APC members get to vote on whatever vacant seats are available, staff members or family or community members.
So it'd be like the school board voting on the next school board members instead of the public?
Not instead of, but as a part of. It's open to the entire Discovery Peak community. That community being parents, staff, APC members. Well, really, APC members are parents and staff and a couple of outside community members.
So it would be like us being able to vote. It would be just like how our elections are. Anybody who lives within the borough can vote. You can vote for a board member as well. No vote is weighted more than the other. Correct?
So to be clear, anyone who's part of your school that are families, that have children in your school, they get to vote on who sits on the APC, be it family, a family seat, be it a community seat, or be it a staff seat?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I did give it a read, so I do have several questions, and we may take a break so somebody else has a chance. But just some clarity, you chose, and I'm looking at Article 4, the section one, membership. You've got a range of seven to nine members on APC. I don't have a problem with having a range. I'm just interested in what your thinking is. Are you aiming for seven, aiming for nine? Is it that you're going to establish it's going to be X number, but we can always expand if we want to? I just want to see, understand your rationale behind it.
Honestly, we're aiming for nine. That's currently what we have. We just gave ourselves some wiggle room. It's been difficult to try to get APC members and to just make sure that we have a governing APC that is in accordance with our bylaws. We made a range.
Okay. So the expectation is nine, and I understand it's hard to get enough people running. We're seven. So as I thought about it, we're a good example of. But so if you say you're aiming for nine, and you only get seven or eight, that's where you'll stay, or where you'll keep a vacancy, where?
Essentially.
Fill that vacancy, or what?
We would try to fill that vacancy in the next election. So we say, you know, this year, we only had eight people. Next year, we would advertise for that ninth spot as well. So whoever was going in for the vacancies plus that ninth spot. So we wouldn't just keep it open. It would just, so that we didn't have to keep having elections or, you know, keep having families vote. But that next year, we'd always strive for that ninth position.
Follow up with that. Did you think about, well, I'm thinking of City of North Pole on several occasions, did not have enough candidates, and so they had the election. There were write-ins, they filled it, but otherwise, they filled it through their vacancy procedure. But that is not your intent at this point for those?
It wasn't our intent, no.
Okay, great, thanks. And my other question in that area was, I noticed it's a majority permanent staff. What's your expectation? I mean, because that's one of the issues that sometimes has come up with charter schools. It's a staff committee more than a broader community. That majority saying, is it five of nine will be staff, permanent staff? Or is it four of seven? Or what's?
So right now, we have a staff of, we have five staff on our nine board members. I mean, we'd like to keep it somewhere around there. In the event that we were to have less APC members, then, you know, we're just trying to keep a majority. So not overwhelming majority, but, you know, four of seven would be, and, you know, roughly five of eight or five of nine.
Okay. But it could be six or seven.
Because of how we have it outlined of how many staff, how many parents, it should never get to the point where we have an, I'll use the word excessive, amount of staff members.
Okay, then I might have missed that. I didn't see that there was any limitation on that. So. So while they're looking that up, could I ask administration, I just question, because I don't know the answer. Is there anything in state regs that on charter schools that says whether it can be predominantly staff member APC, or does it need to be broader? Is there anything in that?
There's no specification on that. It just says there needs to be representation, and there's no limits on how that representation looks.
Thank you. I want you to put me back in the queue.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you. Clearly, in section one, it says there will be a minimum of seven or a maximum of nine. And whatever that number is, it says with the majority of members being permanent staff members. So depending on how many people are actually sitting on the APC will determine how many are actually staff members, that being a majority. My question, that deals with membership. Section two references terms. Section three is term limitations. Four is vacancies, compensation, resignation. We get to, let's see, was that nominations? Can you tell me, looking for Article 5, there we go. Election of officers. Section two. The officers shall be elected in November from among the members of the APC by a majority of members present. There will be no more than two DPCS staff serving as an officer at the time. Again, the officers shall be elected in November from among the members of the APC. That tells me that the membership, the people who sit on your APC board, is elected by the people of the APC. I'm not understanding where, when you're telling me it's the people that are...
So the role that they play within the APC is what is selected in November?
The role that they play. Election of officers.
So the president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary?
Thank you.
They get elected in November.
Thank you, the officers.
And then, yes.
Identifying who's, what officer, and what role they play. Can you, where is it that it speaks to the actual election of the APC?
Article six, under section one is the nomination. Section two is the election.
Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Actually, in that same category of Article five, section three, the term of the offices, officers, and two will be up every other year. How do you plan to designate which positions rotate or?
So essentially, we already have that naturally built in. So the president and the treasurer go up at the same time, and then the vice president and the secretary go up at the same time. The idea being that you're just rotating, you're not having the entire, the officers of the APC all leaving at the same time or all becoming brand-new.
All right. Which I think is a great idea to do it, but you already have it somewheres in your bylaws then, or is president and treasurer and VP and secretary, is that right?
It's not in our bylaws. It's just what's naturally happening with, like, with the term limits and what we've been doing and how they've played out in just the short amount of time that we've been open as a school.
All right. Okay, all right. Might be a thought at some point to do a better designation on that, or, although I know if somebody leaves, you could have three officers going, and you want to, so, okay. Do you want me to just go with another one? Okay. Going to Article six, number, section six, exceptions. And I may be reading this wrong, but it sounds like if you don't have enough candidates, you can just do away with elections.
Yes, that's what's been the precedent before us.
Okay. But in terms of going forward and that they should be, my understanding, and administration can correct me if I'm wrong, is that they are an elected body, so you would still have elections, would still need to have elections, though you may not have candidates to fill all the positions, but all of those would be elected. This seems to me you can do away with elections.
Right. The nominations are open to be made by any in the broad Discovery Peak community. And if those nominations don't fill the number of seats that we are attempting to make or equal the number of seats that we are trying to fill, then there is no need for an election. Did I say that correctly?
Well, that's the way I read it, that, so you're not going to have it. I guess my concern is that you may have somebody who wasn't nominated, so on the ballot, but basically could be, who joins your community and says, hey, I'd be happy to run. I was in here in time for that, but if I can get written in, my name can be written in, you know, something like that. My other is that to the administration and understanding how this plays, is one of the concerns was elections, that the APC does need to be elected, then there's Open Meetings Act responsibilities, et cetera. Concerned how this plays when you don't have an election and you can decide whether to have an election. have an election or not.
For there to be an election, there has to be nominations. There has to be somebody to vote for.
Agreed.
I mean.
The question here is, well, we don't have enough people, so we're just going to put people in. And does that play in terms of their responsibilities?
Assuming they're qualified.
So my question is to the administration.
So if I understand your, your question, it, it goes back to non-elected individuals sitting on a voting APC? If, in this situation, as I understand it, the people sitting on the APC would have been elected to their position. There's just no one else to take the position. So, so everyone sitting on the APC has gone through an electoral process? If I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly, everyone that sits on the APC as a voting member would have gone through an election process?
No, not with this, not necessarily with this exception. If I newly join the Discovery Peak community, I say I'll, I'd run for the APC, but there aren't enough candidates for the vacancies. This says there doesn't need to be any election. And basically I just get on there and there's been no election. I haven't been elected.
Okay, so that's not how I understood it. Is that the intent of the bylaws? That if there is a candidate for nominated, you would hold an election? If someone is nominated, you would hold an election? Is that correct?
If someone's nominated, then we hold an election.
The exception being, and that, I think that's where you're holding up. I do understand what you're saying. In the event that the number of qualified candidates is less than or equal to the number of vacant positions, the APC may dispense with an election and confirm candidates with a majority vote. That is what it says. So if there are, if there is not an excess of nominations, an official ballot does not go out to the Discovery Peak community.
Okay. So that, that would mean that you would have individuals that are serving on your APC that were not elected.
But they were nominated. They had to be nominated, they have to be qualified within our, you know, brief qualifications.
They're qualified candidates. So they're the only one in their category nominated. So you're making the assumption if they were nominated and they qualify, that they would be on the board. Oh, sorry. Is that, am I understanding that right?
So I think what my question is, is are you asking us to hold an election that even if a person gets one vote, they win?
Yes, that could be. But my, my main thing is that if you have people running for the APC, you have to have an election. And I'll use North Pole City Council as an example. They have an election even if they don't have enough candidates for the vacancies, for the seats that are open. And, and I only use them as an example because I know they've gone through that and had to deal with, deal with that issue. But this basically says, if you have three openings, you have two candidates, you don't have to have an election. And I have a real concern with that. And I'm not sure that, and I think it becomes problematic in terms of the discussions over this past year to make sure that charter schools, APCs are in, in line with state regs.
I guess my last comment on this topic would just be that we mimicked this verbiage off of other approved bylaws of charter schools. I had Mrs. Smith and then Mr. Sampson and then Ms. Matheson. Ms. Smith?
This language is in all of the other charter school bylaws. I didn't find it unusual in any way. I'm a member of the Discovery Peak community and I would not feel disenfranchised by this system. I would feel disenfranchised by a committee of the APC appointing people to a voting position, which was the problem I had with other bylaws that were put before me. But having our staff waste their time putting one name on a piece of paper and asking people to vote for it. As a member of the community, I'd rather not have my students' education time impacted by things that are a waste of time. So I don't have a problem with this. And this is what is in the other bylaws of other charter schools. I think that it was a lot of hard work and that they went through all of the AASB training and that their bylaws, that they have presented us very closely mirror all of the other charter schools. And that I would, I'm voting to approve these bylaws and we, and note that we have a lot of work to do this evening. And I'd like to call the questions soon, not right this minute, but I think we need to move forward with this conversation.
And I've got three people left on the queue and I'd like to finish those up and, and then move on. But we do have Mr. Sampson, Mrs. Matheson and then Mr. Dorrin.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to express my support for this. I don't want to split hairs and, and go down a rabbit hole here. As was said previously, we have a lot of business to do. This is, we, you know, we've requested that you come back to clarify some of the changes. This, the, the matter at hand, if you call it the matter at hand, is pretty, pretty clear that when you've got three open seats and you only have two people running, you know, let's use some common sense here. You know, those two people obviously are going to be, be put into place. It saves time. I don't think any, you know, no one's going to sue, sue the district, no one's going to sue your school. It's equitable, it's fair. I'd, I'd like to move on.
Ms. Matheson and then Mr. Dorrin.
I just need clarification on qualified. Qualified. We keep on saying qualified. And what does that mean? I don't see anywhere in here where an APC member has to be qualified or what the qualifications are. So I just want to know what that means.
I would define that as fitting the category of either staff, parent, community member. Myself as head teacher cannot run for the APC. I, I am on it in a different type of way. I'm a non-voting member as head teacher, therefore I cannot run for an APC position. Otherwise, staff, parent, community member.
So community member, like I could run?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted that cleared up. Thank you.
Mr. Dorrin?
Thank you. I just have a little bit more here on Article nine, section one on the head teacher interview. Do I read this correctly? Is that one APC executive board member is the person who's doing the interview? Or is there other, that doesn't preclude their having more than that individual being part of that? Is that right?
No, there's just one executive board member or officer of the APC that will be responsible or in that interview. And it just will not be a staff member, obviously.
And then my other question, and I have a final comment, is Article 11 on parliamentary It seems inconsistent or contradictory within that. And would just suggest relooking at that wording because it says you're, you use revert rules of orders in all cases in which they are applicable and in which they are not consistent with these bylaws. And so I'm not sure about that non, not consistent with, they would apply when they're not consistent with the bylaws. So just point to think about. And I do appreciate that some of the things here are kind of boil up really from other, bylaws from other charter schools. My issue in going through it is more in terms of, we were trying to clean up some things this year and you guys have worked on that as other charter schools have. So there may be continued work to do that. And this is a step towards that. I do have some concerns. So I, what I do want to say is I will not be voting in support of this at this time. I think there's some cleanup that would be preferential. But I do want to make very clear, it is no reflection on your school and community. And I absolutely thoroughly enjoyed my time coming down and the tour that you, you gave me and just seeing teachers and students. And I think there were some parents there too at the same time. I mean, just a lot of things in action. And it was very impressive and had a really nice feel. So I want to make it clear that my concerns are more getting this right, at least in my mind and as you're working at it. But really want to appreciate your efforts and appreciate what you do as a school. So, and thanks for having me there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other board members left on the queue. Ms. Mullin, anything further? And then we're ready for the vote.
I have nothing further.
Mrs. Tuttle, could we have the vote, please?
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dorrin?
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the work. Next, we have approval of Boreal Sun Charter School revised charter bylaws.
Move to approve? Pardon me.
Core value, maintain high expectation in educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Boreal Sun Charter Schools revised charter bylaws were not approved by the board at its May 17th regular meeting. Concerns were raised, including the matter of non-elected academic policy committee positions and the voting authority of those positions. The Boreal Sun Charter School APC met on June 1st, 2022 to approve its revised charter bylaws. The proposed revised charter bylaws are now before the school board for approval. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the revised charter bylaws of Boreal Sun Charter School as presented and approved by the Boreal Sun Charter School APC on June 1st, 2022.
Second.
We now have a motion on the floor. Do we have any testimony from the room? Seeing none, testimony is now closed because you're presenting, correct?
I was going to testify.
Testify. Okay.
That's fine. I am, my name's Lucia Zakowski. I'm the middle, one of the middle school teachers at Boreal Sun Charter School. I'm also the chair of the academic policy committee and I can answer your questions.
Can I go to administration first?
Absolutely.
Yes, I would just like to acknowledge the work that Boreal Sun APC did. They organized themselves in a very short timeframe, had their meeting, got input from folks here in the administration, worked hard to align themselves with, with good bylaws. So I just want to acknowledge that the work they did, the timeframe they did it within was, was tight, but they were able to accomplish it. So, and the administration recommends the approval of their bylaws.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Dorrin?
Thank you. Thank you for being here again. Really appreciate all the work that you guys went through and going back and taking a look and addressing most of the concerns. So I just have two small questions. One is the seven to nine range for the board, as I just asked previous people. Could you just explain your rationale on how you, Boreal Sun expects to implement that?
Well, we hope as Discovery Peaks to always have a nine-member board, but there are times when somebody leaves the school. If we, if we set that, that membership at nine, that doesn't give us any wiggle room.
Kind of setting a continuity instead of necessarily bringing someone in the last month or something of that sort, as long as you have at least your seven?
Right. And one of the things, Mr. Dorrin, that you had pointed out at our, the last time that we met was that in our previous bylaws, we were waiting for a trigger at seven members to, if, if we had a vacancy in a non-election period to appoint somebody. And so now we've taken that out and we can appoint somebody whenever there's a vacancy. So we can always try to maintain a nine-member board.
Thank you. My other question was just a small word piece that the, and, and you're going to a principal next year, right? Is the?
Yeah, so that was one of the housekeeping changes that we had made. We have, as an APC, decided that we would like to hire a principal rather than a head teacher. And so we wanted to have our bylaws reflect that.
Right. So my, the word that I was interested in is the principal will serve in perpetuity as an ex-official member. And I don't want to get into a big wordsmithing, but I'm curious why, what your intent is in the word of perpetuity as rather than just the principal being an ex-official member?
Well, we don't elect the board member, I mean, we don't elect the principal as a member of the board. So just as long as that principal is the principal, they are also a member of the APC.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And thanks for all the work to you and the APC and staff.
Seeing no other board member, hands up. Any last comment from administration? Oh, Mr. Sampson?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for waiting so long. Thanks for the work that you guys did on it here in the last few weeks and thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thank you. We are, we are really eager to have elections. We have been waiting for a year. And so just to let you know, we will start the school year with a special election to fill two currently vacant seats. And then we'll turn around and have another election in February or the end of January, beginning of February.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mullin?
We have nothing further.
Mrs. Tuttle? Ready for the vote?
Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dorrin?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have curriculum adoption, career technical education information technology for grades six through 12. Core value, center everything we do on the student and student learning. The administration provided a report to the school board on the proposed Career Technical Education Information Technology curriculum, draft two, at the May 17th meeting. There were no changes to the proposed curriculum since the board's report. The curriculum is now before the board for adoption. The administration recommends the adoption of the curriculum as submitted. Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt the Career Technical Education Information Technology for grades six to 12 as submitted.
Second. We have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Do we have any testimony from the audience? Seeing none, testimony is now closed and I'd like to turn time over to administration.
Thank you. We just appreciate the work that has gone into creating this, this curricula and we highly recommend the, the approval of the curriculum.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Mrs. Tuttle, looks like we're ready for the vote.
Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dorrin?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have curriculum adoption, grades six through 12 mathematics. Core value, center everything we do on the student and student learning. The administration provided a report to the school board on the proposed grades six through 12 mathematics curriculum, draft four on the May 17th meeting. After the May 17 report, a typographical error was found in the blue box on page 105. It initially stated the prerequisite for semester two of Algebra II was semester one of Algebra I. It has been corrected to show the prerequisite is semester one of Algebra II. There were no other changes to the proposed curriculum. The curriculum is The curriculum is now before the board for adoption. The administration recommends the adoption of the curriculum as submitted. Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt the six through 12 mathematics curriculum as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and seconded. Do we have any testimony to the curriculum, to this item of business? Seeing none, testimony is now closed. I'd like to turn time over to administration.
Again, I'd like to acknowledge the work from both Rachel Riley and her team of math teachers that worked on this curriculum over a long time. And I, I think at our last meeting, they did a good job of covering what was done and what's presented. And I just highly recommend that we, we adopt the curriculum as submitted.
Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none. Mrs. Tuttle, we're ready for the vote.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, curriculum material adoption, grades six through 12 mathematics. Core value: Student centered, center everything we do on student and student learning. The administration provided a report to the school board on the curriculum materials proposed for grades six through 12 mathematics curriculum at the May 17th meeting. There were no changes to the proposed curriculum materials since the board's report. Mathematics curriculum materials are now before the board for adoption. The administration recommends the adoption of the curriculum materials for grades six through 12 mathematics curriculum and as submitted. Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt the curriculum materials for grades six to 12 mathematics curriculum as submitted.
Second.
We now have a motion seconded on the floor. Do we have any testimony from the audience? Seeing none, testimony is now closed. I'd like to turn the time over to administration.
Yes, I'd like to just recall back to our last meeting when Mr. Beam made his presentation on the materials and noted that they would come before the board in two separate chunks. And you can see in your, your document here what, what this particular piece is. But I just wanted to draw your memory back to that report when he did lay it out as two separate votes, and yet it's still a part of the math curriculum. And so just remembering back to the presentation.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight and all the work that you represent on behalf of the team. My question regarding the materials, and I do understand that there'll be more materials coming to us, but my question is timing. We just adopted the new curriculum. There are some new courses that I assume are going into play this fall for which materials have not been identified. What's the plan? What do teachers do the first day of school? Does, we still need to identify the materials, go through that process, come to the board, it could be weeks into the school year, months.
Right, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to start it, and then I'll ask Rachel to step in also. So it kind of depends on what classes we are talking about. Many of the, of the classes that we're looking at, and right now, you're only referring to high school classics because everything else is covered. Algebra I is covered, Algebra II is covered, geometry is covered already. There may be some AP classes they, that are out there that we're looking at. If it's a class that we already have, we have a book for it already. But we'll be looking for newer, more updated ones in the future. But let's say that there might be an AP calculus class out there that we already have a book for. We'll continue using that book until we find a new one that is more updated. And then once that happens and we have the funding, then we'll make those purchases.
Okay. I have to find these X-spot here. There are identified, when identified new one at the middle school, and then there are identified new courses at the high school. So it appears they're not continuing courses, they're new.
Correct, you're right.
So we have no materials for those courses.
Rachel.
So we can't have materials for courses that aren't adopted? And so until they were adopted tonight, high schools were not planning to run them because they're not a part of the curriculum. And so if you look at our curriculum cycle, we have our, year three is the implementation year, and within that year is the period where we choose materials for classes. So many high schools will not be offering these courses until at least the following spring semester.
So these courses will not be offered? The new courses will not be offered? Will not be offered? They're approved, they will not be offered, though, for this?
For one year.
For one year?
Or at least through the fall. So once we have materials, we'll be able to offer them.
And is that materials solicitation review underway? Where, where do we stand with that?
So we've, we've already gathered materials from the vendors to be reviewed for those courses, hoping that you would adopt the curriculum. And so that will begin right away in the fall. We have plans to start it during in-service, which is before students come back, with the goal that the board will adopt those materials in December. Or earlier, preferably.
Okay, I appreciate the, the information. I will say I will support the adoption of the couple of materials that are here. I am a little bit disappointed in the, the lag to be able to put those courses in, which I, I do think were good things and recommendations within the math curriculum that we just approved, but that we could have put those in place earlier. We had the whole process earlier, but I'll leave my comments there.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you. I'll piggyback on that. In your, in your opinion, do you, do you see any of the new classes being offered next year? Maybe in the spring, or do you think they'll be the full year?
Go ahead.
I think it depends on how high schools schedule their courses. So for some schools, to ensure, you know, they have adequate teacher coverage, they may have already scheduled for the full year. But I, I think probably they'll be slotted in come the spring.
And then a follow-up. Ideally, how much time would you like ahead of time? You know, we're, we're at the end of the year, and we're talking about, we're just now giving approval to new courses, and we're asking you, where's all the material? I get it. What, how much time would you like in between? What's ideal for, for a new course?
Is it a year? Well, so I, I think it's important to keep in mind is that we come up with a curriculum first, that is what we're going to teach, and what we, what we want the kids to know. You all vote on that, which you did, that was the previous vote. And then once that is, that is settled, then the next step is to buy the materials. There's no point in buying the materials until you guys have already approved what the curriculum is. So we can do it, and, and we can do it as, as quickly as possible. But part of the whole six-year rotation is, is the curriculum one year, and then the materials the following year.
I don't see anyone else. I've got another.
Mr. Doran had his hand up, but if you just had one more question, go ahead, Mr. Sampson, and then Mr. Doran.
Yeah, so really clearly, just so everyone understands, the, the curriculum is one year, and the material is the following year. So it's kind of unreasonable to, is it unreasonable? I, I hear it's unreasonable to approve a curriculum and expect that curriculum to get rolled out until the materials are approved, which is on the following year's process.
I think it kind of depends on whether we have, many times, if a curriculum is approved, and we already have, and it's, it's, it's an older content area. Let's say typically Algebra I in this case. Algebra I is kind of, excuse me, Algebra I is Algebra I. There might be some changes to it here and there, but essentially, it's the same. So if we have the curriculum now, we could still use, if we had to, an older Algebra I book for a year until we purchase the new ones. If it's a brand-new class, there would, there would be a little lag in that. And maybe that's what you're referring to specifically, that if it's a brand-new class, if it's a class that we've already had and it's a very typical class, we could still use that old textbook for one more year until we roll it over.
Mr. Doran?
Question to the administration is, and I don't know how many of these books, I mean, how many students we're thinking about, what cost of materials, has that been worked into our budget for next year? Do we need to make an adjustment for purchasing materials to join the course of the year?
Those purchases are a part of the budget. It, it's a part of teaching and learning's budget, and they purchase materials out of their budget. So while we have a budget for it, as you well know, all budgets are quite lean. So, so that is a consideration as we look at, at materials, adoption and purchase.
Okay, clarification, and I'm not trying to nickel-and-dime the, the idea, but so it is in the budget? And this is planned, was planned into the budget? Or are you saying it's too lean to do it, and we're going to have to come back? I'm not sure.
No, it's planned, planned into your budget. Mr. Beam?
So yeah, I'll, I'll clarify. If we remember back when all the EDs sat here and we went over all of our budgets, next year's budget for materials has already been spoken for, for the second half of the I-ready materials. If we, I'm sure that's a lot of detail that you don't remember, but it's already been spoken for. So what we'll have to do is plan this out for the future, and this is something that we've been working on, is that we'll need to, to plan out for the future. Is that when we do have a budget that we can purchase the materials, we will certainly do so. But next year's budget is spoken for, for the second half of the I-ready, of which the first half was paid for this year.
Okay, so then what I understand is the materials for the new courses, which will come to us for approval next fall at some point, is not budgeted for?
I would say at this moment, it is not, but that doesn't mean that I can't move some money around to make those purchases happen.
Okay, okay. All right, so that, that's fine with me that you'll, you'll find it in your budget. I'm, I'm looking to see whether we're coming back because we have postponed materials purchases, even for continuing courses because of, and in math.
Correct, and that's, and that's unusual thing is that sometimes that happens.
We got way out of date, but.
You don't, you don't.
But I wanted to know what we're, so at this point, you're not anticipating coming back to the board from the administration to ask for supplemental to buy these purchases, buy these materials?
No, I don't, I can't.
No, that's not in our plan.
Great, and I, and I think, and I appreciate, and lest it was misunderstood, that yes, there's a separation between the curriculum adoption and materials, although we have that here with materials that we're acting on right away. And we've usually had curriculum come to us, and in the same spring, materials and such. So, but I do know, and I want to recognize that there were some circumstances coming back with, from COVID and just still dealing with COVID issues and things that, that may have precluded quite that timeline. So I want to recognize that, but it's, we have it tonight. Curriculum adopted, materials right before us. We've had the separation before with just a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings. And so that has been, but you answered my question for next fall that we will be getting materials adoption at no additional budget adjustment.
Yeah, I won't be asking, asking for any more money. It's, like I said, if we have the money to buy things, we will, and if we don't have the money, then...
Then these, those courses will wait for another year?
If they need to.
Two years or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have Mrs. Smith and then Ms. Marotti in the queue.
I, I support adopting the two pieces of curriculum that are put before us at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
When we spoke about this on the 17th, we talked about how this will impact students that have taken Algebra I in eighth grade. And you, I think we talked about you needing to look in to see who the cohorts would go back to, that would be grandfathered in. Can you confirm what grade the cohort will start in? That will be grandfathered into getting the credit?
So I think I know what you're asking, but can you ask it in a different way for me?
So.
Point of order, this is not regarding the question on the table.
Regarding math curriculum.
Not on the math curriculum, we're on the materials.
Math curriculum materials.
It's two exact materials.
Chair.
I'd like to listen, I, I'd like to allow Ms. Marotti the opportunity to ask this particular question.
Thank you. Those that, middle school students that have taken Algebra I, what, at what grade will they be grandfathered into getting the high school credit for that?
So we're going to start this curriculum that you all have just voted for. That whole system will begin next year, correct? Next year. So when they are, when they become freshmen, that those, let me back up. Anyone who was not a freshman, who's not a freshman will be grandfathered in because it starts with a, with a cohort. So we start it, it starts with those freshmen, and then the next year will be the freshmen and sophomores, and the following year it'll be freshmen, sophomore, juniors.
So you're not getting the materials until 2023?
I feel like that's a totally different question. Are you asking about materials?
Well, that's when it starts.
Grandfathering in, because I, because those are two distinct things.
But you just said that the materials, that the cohorts will start when you get the materials. Right, you can't start the, okay, I must have been confused. So the freshmen of what year? What year will the cohort be? You said that it'll be the?
We will start this, and we will start, what you all have already just voted on, in not 22, 23, but 23, 24. That's when it starts, and those freshmen will be the ones that start that.
So is that current seventh graders?
That makes sense, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any last thoughts from administration?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Tuttle, we're ready for the vote.
Colonel Williamson?
Ask a quick question.
Is it imperative for the vote?
Can I ask it right after the vote? It's, it's an information piece that I'd like to get at some point.
Very quick.
Okay. I'm sorry, it was confusing as you were going. You kept switching years, who's freshman next year, freshman two years from now as the cohort? Perhaps could you put that, could I ask for the board to get that clearly in writing? You know, or note to us that we, we know exactly.
Sure.
It seemed to give two different answers. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. Thank you.
Yes, we can do that.
Mrs. Tuttle?
I'm sorry, Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the fiscal year 2020.
Move to extend to 10/15.
Second.
Any objection? Seeing none, we're extended until 10/15. Fiscal year 2024 through 2029, six-year capital improvement plan adoption. Core value: Provide a safe learning environment. The Alaska Department of Education and Early Development deed requires a board-adapted six-year capital improvement plan be submitted annually by September 1st in order to be considered for state grant funding. The administration is now submitting their fiscal year 2024-2029 six-year capital improvement plan for adoption by the school board. Administration will speak on this, to this plan. Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt the FY 2024 to 2029 six-year capital improvement plan.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to testify? Seeing none, testimony is now closed, administration.
So I just want to clarify a few things from the CIP list that you have in your, in your board packet. Some of those projects have, were completed in 2023, well, or previous to that. And that's the Administrative Center Replacement Air Conditioning and Ventilation happened in 2017. The Lathrop High School Roof Replacement happened in 2019. The Ben Adelson Junior Senior High Roof Replacement happened in 2021. And Wood River Elementary School happened in 2020. So those appear on your list, but they have been completed. So with that, we'll open up for any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you for that update on some of those projects, appreciate that. Question that came up from some people in the public, so just so they understand, and a news article put, if you could just explain for the public the difference between our ranking and the state ranking? Because something may be high on our list, and it comes on a state ranking that comes out and it's lower. And I understand that, but could you explain it for the public? Because I know it caused some confusion amongst people.
So our ranking is that our maintenance team, we get together and we kind of go over and prioritize projects. Sorry. We go over and evaluate and prioritize projects depending on deferred maintenance. We look at our electrical, mechanical components, seeing things on an annual basis. And if we see things that have been failing, then we kind of, we ourselves among our team, we bump it up on the list. The states, the way that they do their ranking is slightly different. It all depends on how we put that information into the capital improvement plan. With supporting documentation, so if we don't have enough supporting documentation, everything is scored.
I do follow, okay. And at the state level, we're actually, even if we have everything in and all the I's dotted, T's crossed, the state is taking and doing their ranking of all the districts. So even though it could be our first choice, it could be number 11 in the state. So that's outside of our, our process. And so when those are reported, they need to make sure they know that's a state ranking, and these are ours. And then related to this, could you talk a little bit about how the conversation happens and the interfacing with the, with our capital improvement plan? And the borough KIP? And I know that's still a new process, but if you could explain, that's helpful to the public.
So there's a two-part to this capital improvement. One is with the state, when we submit on September 1st, and that's when the governor looks at the priority list. And then every two years, the borough then has their CIP process. And we just had ours November of last year. And within that two-year process, they have approved Lathrop High School Kitchen Upgrade and the U Park, and so that is in its planning stage. So we'll be back again, not next year, but the following year with the state, with, with the borough for whatever projects the state are not going to fund for us.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Moline, administration, anything else?
No, we have nothing further.
We probably need to wait a moment for our board member to return. Ms. Tuttle?
Pardon me?
Do we need to wait until our board member returns?
That's your call.
I would like to. We'll give it just a moment.
Pardon me?
We'll just give it one more moment, and then we'll go to the vote if she's not returned. All right, Mrs. Tuttle, could we get the vote? Thank you.
Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you, Colonel Suri? Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Next on our list, suspend policy 264, types of meetings for 2022-2023, school board regular meeting schedule adjustments. Goals and objective: Ensure students, staff, families and community are informed, connected and engaged with the district. Each spring, the school board sets its regular meeting calendar for the following year. Regular meetings of the board generally take place on the first and third Tuesday of most months when school is in session. Historically, the school board has canceled its second December and first January meetings due to the close proximity to winter break. Next school year, the second regular meeting in May falls during the, during high school graduations. The administration recommends the board move its second regular meeting in May from May 16th, 2023 to May 23rd, 2023, and cancel its December 20th, 2022 and January 3rd, 2023 regular meetings. The board always has the ability to call for an additional regular meeting during the year if needed. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the board's 2022 through 2023 regular meeting calendar by suspending policy 264. Types of meetings to move its second May 2023 regular meeting from May 16th, 2023 to May 23rd, 2023 due to high school graduations, and to cancel December 20th, 2022 and January 3rd, 2023 regular meetings due to their close proximity to winter break.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. Do we have any testimony from the audience? Seeing none, testimony is now closed. Administration?
We have nothing further but our recommendation here on the calendar.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I know that this, that we can always call a meeting, and that even this past year we did call a meeting. But I, as a member of the public and a member of the board, I never really cared for how the board, the board meeting before Christmas and after Christmas is canceled, especially in times when we have so much work to do. When we have negotiations, we have our superintendent search. This past year, we ended up calling that meeting right before Christmas anyway because we had so much work to do. And it just seems contrary to write off, cancel those meetings because I feel that sincerely we're going to need at least the one before Christmas break because we just have so much work to do, and it's more fair to the public to put them on the calendar so that they're aware that these are when our meetings are, and then cancel them due to not having work to do than it is to not have them scheduled and have to call a special meeting on a short notice. It's just my opinion.
Ms. Matheson?
So looking at the calendar, it looks like in November we have the two, the first and the 15th. Could we move the 6th to the 29th and then the 23rd to the 13th so that it doesn't get canceled? I'm just throwing off the calendar. Would that be something that you guys would want to do? Because I don't want to come in on the 20th and no one else be here. You know, like no school, there's no school that week.
Ms. Smith, and then Mr. Doran?
If I can say, I did not intend to imply that I want to come on the 20th. I'm only saying that we should have two meetings during December. I don't particularly care when they are, even if they're one week and then the next week. It's just, that's just my opinion. I mean, I'll probably just vote to pass this calendar because it's what we always do, and we're just going to call another special meeting in December anyway. But I'm just putting it out there that I think that it is silly and that it makes us look silly how we put out the calendar with a bunch of meetings that are crossed out right off from the start. It is weird. That has long, long been my belief, and I'm ready to say it to everyone today.
Mr. Doran?
I think the, the points are well-taken. But with experience, what I've seen over the years, both on the board and not on the board, is that effectively having those two meetings canceled ahead of time does make sense. I do want to take the, the point that was made that I, to heart because I think as we look at things in the fall, that if we want to, that perhaps we want to be as proactive as we can. I think last year when we had that meeting in December, it was in part because something came up. All of a sudden, we needed to address that quickly. In most cases, we can plan, and depending upon what we actually have, that we look at that calendar if we're doing superintendent search, for instance, lay that out ahead of time as best we can for people. So we can do as much forenotice as we can. But I would suggest that those two meetings that we're canceling often hit where people are leaving town or have left town, or, you know, it's, vacation is already, is in play, it's enjoying that time. And keeping in mind that we do have special meeting tentatively for discipline and readmits during those times that sometimes comes up. So I'm comfortable going with as proposed. But I think taking to heart the, the comment that we, we try to be as proactive and get information out to the public if something else is different.
Anything further from administration?
Nothing further.
Mrs. Tuttle, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Last on our agenda is information and reports. Administrative recommendations regarding restructuring committees. Core value: Engage with students, family, staff and community to support student success. The school board requested the administration provide its recommendations on the restructuring of board and administrative committees. Karen Moline, chief school administrator, will speak to the administration's recommendations. Mrs. Moline?
Thank you, President Luke. I would, first of all, like to address what seems to be a significant misunderstanding or misinformation about this particular recommendation. Just to be clear, the recommendation does not eliminate officially any committee. It's simply a recommendation that the board asked. And it's just one piece of a much larger process that the, that the board has gone through. Earlier this year, the board participated in a training from AASB where they addressed specifically the structure of our board committees, and they are board committees, with the recognition that, from the board, that we wanted to look at it for improvement. So from there, the board formed the ad hoc committee, which did their work. And at the last board meeting, the board asked the administration's recommendation. So after listening to AASB training, after listening to the conversation of the board and the committee at the last meeting, looking at the need for structure that aligns with purpose and outcomes, the administration made this recommendation. And as in the memo, it states, some of the reasoning behind this structure is the, the main responsibilities or the, the purview responsibilities of the board lie primarily within budget, policy, curriculum and legislation. So thinking about that as the, the purpose, those would be the board chaired committees, where the board would be, the, the committee would be chaired by a board member, worked with the administration, similar to how it operates now. The legislative committee would be a committee of the whole because all of the board members are the ones that set the legislative priorities for the board. It's their board legislative priorities. And then the, the community engagement committee would be a larger opportunity for the administration to fulfill the purpose and outcomes of these committees. And that being that we, it, they serve as an advisory input to inform the board. So that would give the opportunity for larger topics, larger conversations, things that come up. Then that committee could address any number of topics. So that was the thinking behind that. And then our CTE committee being, like it serves now, is an advisory position on the committee and, and to the board. So that was the, the thinking behind this, this structure. And like I had mentioned earlier, it is a small piece in a much larger process. And there's no decision that has been made. It's just a way of looking at our committees after sitting in the AASB training and listening to everything that they said, looking at other ways of doing things. That's, that's where this piece fits into the much larger conversation of committees.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Moline. I appreciate your recommendation, and I just have one question. Is the CTE administrative committee required by their grant or some kind of thing? I just was curious why CTE is the only little thing that had its own administrative committee and continues to be recommended to do so? Something in my mind said it was something about their grant.
They do need to have a, was somebody over here raising a hand? Okay. So they do need to have a, an advisory, an input, stakeholder input, and having a committee with a board member on it helps serve that input.
Ms. Marotti, and then Mr. Doran.
I have a question and then a statement. The question, isn't there a sped advisory committee?
Not chaired by the board.
There's no board member on the sped advisory committee?
I believe, we currently have one on there, but it's not chaired nor run through the board.
Right. So, like the CTE committee where it's administrative committee, but there's a board member on it?
This person's there as a parent?
Oh.
No.
Correct. It's, if I can explain my role on that board. So, I was actually serving on that board before I was on this board. And then I stayed on that board. And it's actually like just a little advisory group. It's more like a brainstorming group. It's not a committee like, at all like these committees. So, it's called the Special Ed Advisory Committee, but my understanding is it's not in any policy or written anywhere. It's just the sped department has just like once a quarter certain people that they brainstorm with ideas. So, there's no like action, it's not a formal meeting. It's just sort of an advisory committee. But it's not a policy-written committee. You know, they're, you know, that's all. My, I had interaction as a parent and they said, hey, you should be on this little sped advisory committee. So, it was, it's not any kind of formal committee that I'm aware of.
So, I think, just to add to those comments, the difference in the role of what Ms. Smith is talking about is, would probably be more considered a council. So, when you have a, like we have a teacher advisory council that we meet with regularly. We bring before them topics, we hear their topics. So, it's more that the special education council operates more as a council and to, like Ms. Smith said, brainstorm. And also, the difference between our special education department and our CTE grants, their requirements are very different. So, that's where another difference would be between those two.
I'm not sure what the difference between a council and a committee is. They seem very similar, but I'll go with that. And also, I wanted to point out that the committee's, the committee, committee's ad hoc committee that I served on with Ms. Smith and Ms. Anderson, while discussing the diversity committee, we did not recommend to eliminate the diversity committee. And in fact, at the May 3rd board meeting, we discussed that the committee's ad hoc committee suggested keeping the diversity committee and renaming it. And I believe Ms. Anderson was researching indigenous names for the committee. I also wanted to state that the Alaska Association of School Boards state that they support school districts that aim to identify and address disparities among cohorts of students and identify districts' roles in erasing them. They also acknowledge that the historic and persistent achievement gap between ethnic and socioeconomic subgroups of students is unacceptable and that districts must address and overcome inequities and institutional racism to provide all students with support and opportunity. So, without a clearly defined committee on diversity, equity, and inclusion, can you explain how the district will give the time it should and the focus suggested by AASB?
So, I just want to reiterate, this is a recommendation for a possible structure of committees. I'm not suggesting that we eliminate the work of diversity or any such thing. What I am suggesting within this committee shift is that we could address a number of different topics. We could address a diversity topic. We could bring to this committee something that's happening within the larger district to get input from this committee. We could address diversity. We could address, we could bring the calendar before them. We could bring different topics that are happening across the district and we're not focused just on one single thing. So, that making it a much broader and more useful to the board because the purpose of the committees is to, you know, be stakeholder input for the board. So, the board has something before them. They take it to the community engagement committee. They get input, they get ideas, they bring it back to the board. So, taking it back to the purpose and outcomes of our committees, I just felt like this would be a much more useful committee to the board for the purpose, which is for input on different topics.
May I follow up?
Yes.
I hear what you're saying, that you want a broader committee, but that takes away from the importance and what the Alaska Association, Association of Alaska School Boards is trying to say that it needs a very heavy and pointed focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thanks.
I have Mr. Doran, and then Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Matheson.
Thank you. I appreciate the administrative recommendations. And I, no, I was not at that early May meeting when the ad hoc committee, subcommittee task force on committees reported to the board. But I did listen to the full meeting and the conversation there. And this is in response to asking for those. And if I understand the process even laid out then is that the ad hoc group will take, they requested some input. They'll take that and then they'll be bringing it back to the full board at some time in the, in the fall, whether work session or, and then action, whatever. But, so, with that process in mind, I just had two questions just to understand a little bit of the background. The committee of the whole legislative, I like that idea because all of us touch base with legislators. We have overlaps, but we also have specific ones we resonate with, resonate with us. So, we all advocate that way. But one of the pieces on the legislative, and as this year thinks, has been, we've gotten the CSA or superintendent perspective, the FBA president perspective, ESSA perspective, FPA, a community member, that those would be, I guess, if it's a committee as a whole, they may not be on the committee, but they would, it's the expectation, and we could work this into whatever we decide later on. But how do you see them playing to give the board those perspectives as we partner in advocacy?
Well, I think there's a couple of ways that could play out. And one is through our community engagement committee. So, we would convene the community engagement committee with its different representations on the members and get input from them on legislative priorities for them. We'd go through a process to find out what their priorities are. Then bring that to the board and say, here's what our community engagement committee has gone through their process. I think there's other ways that we could find out priorities from our, from our other stakeholders by polling them, gathering that up, and then bringing that stakeholder input to inform then the committee of the whole. So, it would be more of a gathering input, stakeholder input, ideas, engagement, bringing it to the committee, and then the committee of the whole sets the priorities.
Thank you. Can I, can I follow up with that one as well? One of the other ideas that I believe was mentioned during the meeting was having a work session on legislative priorities by including and inviting specific stakeholders that are currently involved to ensure that we are able to create those priorities. And so, it would just go into a work session.
So, in short, there's a variety of ways to include that voice in the setting of priorities.
Okay. I appreciate getting that perspective. The other one that I wanted to ask on is the number of members on the committee. Just, you're thinking, part of our issue is we have 17 to 19 members on most of our committees and they're quite large. The, your recommendation is seven. Is there any reason where you kind of settled on seven versus something else in between?
Right. That was, that came out of our work session with AASB. That was one of their comments, that the size of our committees, what made it a little difficult to manage. So, that was, that was something that came out of the retreat with AASB.
Okay. And they were suggesting seven or 11. I know they were definitely that we
There was a range.
Get less than.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So, there was a range they had there. But, and then I would have to go back and look at specifically their range, but I'm thinking it was like seven to nine members. It might have been seven to 11. But, but our size of committee was something that they mentioned was a bit unwieldy.
Yeah. So, yeah, and I think, well, you know, the ad hoc committee will definitely be looking at its size when we get to the whole board. I'm not sure whether that's the right number, but I was just wondering where that came from. Thank you.
I have Ms. Smith, then Ms. Matheson, and then Ms. Sanderson.
Thank you. Looking at all of those people who would still like to speak, I would move to extend to 10:30.
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing then, we're extended till 10:30.
Thank you. I have, I was going to ask or speak to something else, but Mr. Doran started my mind rolling on the committee of the whole. And I actually always thought it was odd that our legislative committee had voting members who were not us because we are putting forward our priorities. And that FPA has their own lobbyists. They have their own legislative priorities. They have their own business. ESSA, same. And other groups, they are already advocating for what they want and their own money, well, some of their own money and their own time. And our board should be the voice that's heard with our flyer and our legislative priorities. So, I have no problem having the seven of us whose name is on the flyer as our priorities, being the only voting members of that board. And then, I support the system that the administration has put forward regarding the community engagement committee. And one reason that I am interested in this, which I wasn't interested in before I heard the explanation from Ms. Moline, is because they could take quite swift action where they could, being an administrative committee, not have to work within the restraints of being a board committee. And they could say, something in our community has come up. It's a big deal. Let's talk about it right now. And they could pull in their committee and discuss it while it was pertinent immediately. If it happened on Tuesday, they could say, let's get together on Thursday and, and talk about this and get input on it right away. And sort of that slow movement is something I think that the public is frustrated by in our actions. And that makes us seem disconnected from what's happening in the community because we wait a month to discuss something that was pertinent a month ago. And that this kind of administrative committee could really move on something that was happening that we haven't even thought of right now, today. There could be a diversity issue, which I'm not even sure what that means, but there could be an issue regarding DEI. And it could be something that happened in our community, something pertinent, something that's happening to, to an employee, to a student, to community members, where we could say, how's the school going to respond to this? And then the administration has a committee already engaged to pull in and say, what do we as a community think about this? And we, I think we would see less of quick, here's what we think about it. And then that being shockingly different from maybe how the community is feeling about it. And I think that would just eliminate some of that disparity between, well, that's not what people were thinking because we would have people that we already, you know, kind of had the pulse and they could run in here and we could all talk about it. So, I don't know. I just really think that being explained that way made me more supportive of that type of committee where it was action-oriented and swift to move and focusing on pertinent information. And I'd also like to speak to, we did get a lot of emails regarding the diversity committee being not included in this. And so, it could have been, maybe some of that reaction could have been reduced by just a better explanation or more words on the page. You know, saying that the community engagement committee would hold meetings that would cover, and one of the commas being diversity issues in there. And so, it just, for future communication, we see that it is important to the public to keep that on the table. And some of the sort of backlash regarding that might have been covered by just simply saying, this is one of the topics that would be covered by that engagement committee. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Matheson, and then Mrs. Sanderson.
So, being a part of the BIPOC community, I support the recommendation of merging these committees. As a Latina, I support the recommendation of merging these committees. And that's it.
Ms. Sanderson, Ms. Marotti, and then I put myself as well.
So, I just felt that we, we're working on our committees. That was what the training was about. We did an ad hoc committee to start to focus on the work. And one of the frustrations I had is just a part of what Ms. Smith just explained. I wanted to meet with the diversity committee, not under the restrictions of the Open Meeting Act. I mean, can we just get together and at first meet each other, talk to each other, find out what the pulse is, what things were on their minds? I know some of the things. But, you know, it's so sad and disheartening to me that from the very beginning, me getting this chair, this committee, it has just been one big thing after the other. So, once we were appointed to work on the reconstruction, giving ourselves the charge for each of the committees, what the focus of the committees would be, you know, this is long-term work. This is not like a real quick solution because we have to go back over the policies, you know, getting our committee straight, getting the policies to align, getting the ARs to align, and then still being transparent and engaging the community. And, you know, it saddened me that some of the testimony tonight, people felt that we were like pushing them out or not hearing their voices or trying to silence their voice. That's never been my intent. Now, 35 years I have been working with all of the different populations of students, staff, and families. It's never been, and it's not, it's not part of who I am. But when we start engaging these long-term projects, before you can kind of even get your hand on the work, there's all the turmoil and the chaos that is, comes with it. And it's tough to continue to do your work, focus on your work when there's the upheaval and this, this stuff that keeps coming at you. I want to give our, the committee and the work that we started, I want to give that a chance to get on paper, get into the classification, the system where people can, I can see how this committee, the community engagement committee, where people, here's an example. Okay, here's an example. I had a, a student was reported to say that they had a very despairing remark made to them. A student of Kewler was made, like, is that all your real hair? So, to me, that's so crazy that So to me, that's so crazy that in the year 2022, you're still going to ask the person of color about their hair? Or, I mean, we have nails, we have different stuff. If you keep up with me over the past, and look at some of my fast posts, I've had every other color, except for I've never done blue, but I'm, I'm going to get there one day. And, I mean, if we could have had the committee where we could meet, sit down, talk about this, bring it and say, here's the, this group of people, we had this concern as citizens, as, as people, whatever, you know, the family of people in our learning community. And we need this addressed, because it hasn't been addressed. And now we bring this work, we bring this situation, and we present it, and now our administration is aware of it, they know about it, they investigate and do what they do, and then they bring back recommendations to the board. And so I see that it could work. I just, I want to complete the work that the committee was put together to do. And, and once that is complete, and, and nothing in here says that we would eliminate it or not have it, it's just taken a different form and working with a different group, a wider group. And already it was such a large group of people. But if you hear what I'm trying to say, I know I'm stumbling all over the place. I just would like to do my work, bring back the recommendations, see what the final product would be, and if it's something we're missing, then we would be able to put that in there so that it can meet the need of our students, staff, and our community. I think that's worthy work to be doing.
Thank you. I do have Ms. Marotti, myself, Mr. Dorrin, and then Ms. Smith. Oh, and Ms. Matheson.
I just, in response to the comment that it would take a month after something happened for the committee to respond, as the committees are currently set up, it's not exactly true. Last year, this happened, and something happened in our community, and the diversity committee organized and met within days of the event occurring. So I think that if committees have a clear and focused charge, which the committees, ad hoc committees are, that's next on the list to do, if they have a clear and focused charge and are well organized and led with a student and staff focus, they can run very efficiently regardless of the OMA restrictions.
I'll just be very quick and say, I appreciate what Ms. Anderson stated, the importance of the ability to speak and be able to work and, and do the work of the district to ensure safety, security of, of our students, of our staff, of our community, get the engagement, get the information, be able to institute change or bring information to the board quickly, swiftly. And at times, some of that work has to be done individually or through emails, where with Open Meetings Act, we can't necessarily do all of that. And I just feel as though that, Ms. Anderson, you stated it very well, just being able to be efficient and effective and, and get the work done, and at times, at 2:00 in the morning, while I'm sitting there on my, on my computer, or texting someone, or whatever it might be. And that's, and I think that's an important part of the ability, the, the opportunity, if you don't have to follow the Open Meetings Act, and you can actually get the work done and bring it to the board swiftly, bring it to the district, or even bring it to the community swiftly with all of their feedback. I'm going to give it to Mr. Dorrin, and then Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Matheson, and then it'll most likely be time.
Okay. Just quickly, I want to say thank you to the, to President Luke for bringing this forward and appointing an ad hoc committee, and to thank the three members of the ad hoc committee who are continuing their work on this to bring back to the board. And then the administration recommendations to give some input to the ad hoc committee as requested, and then it'll come back to us to do the whole thing. And for the public, I think it's really good to have the context that it was a previous board, five years ago, before I was on the board, who saw that the committees were not working. And they, with the administration, put ideas on the table, they came up with a plan, put it into place in implementation, and we've been able to see it work for five years. In lots of ways, it is a great improvement. There are things we have seen that need, can be done better. And so I just want to say thank you for moving ahead with this, too. It's timely for us to review it, to say what's working, what can we do better, how do we best serve our community and make sure we have that voice? These are advisory committees. Decisions still stay with the board, but it does mean that we engage the community. And so I think it is timely, and I appreciate our efforts building on the work from previous boards.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. It just really occurred to me while Ms. Anderson was speaking, that a lot of the work that the committees are doing is not the purview of the board. Like this conversation that Ms. Anderson just brought up about student behavior and interaction with each other, this is administration's job. It's not about policy, it's not about what we do as a board. So how many times do people come and testify to us? Our hands are tied, there's nothing we can do about that. It's the same thing that's happening in the committees. They're coming and they're, what are they recommending to us? They're recommending administrative action to us, not policy action. So I just think we need to stick to our job, which is making policy decisions and decisions about the budget and improving the curriculum. And everything else is the administration's job, and I'd like to stay out of their job as much as possible.
Ms. Matheson?
I think everything that I've wanted to say has been said.
Well, I want to thank the board for their time this evening, and I really want to thank administration and all those people who hung in there for this evening and for this meeting. I appreciate your work, I appreciate your effort. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any objection? Seeing none, we're adjourned.